Morning Jackie, can you hear us?
Morning Karen, yes I can hear you. You got scared. Can you hear me?
Jackie, can you do another test?
Okay. Good morning Karen, can you hear me?
I can, hold on.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Oh. Okay Jackie, can you do that again?
Good morning Karen, can you hear me?
Oh my, can I hear you from the owl? Need to double check the connections.
Okay.
Try it again.
Good morning Karen, can you hear me?
It's not working. Okay Jack, try it again.
Good morning Karen, can you hear me?
Hmm. Still can't hear you from the owl, hold on.
Can't hear me from the owl. Good morning.
Okay Jackie.
Can you hear me now?
Still can't hear you from the owl, hold on. Give you another test Jackie.
Good morning Karen, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
You're welcome.
I thought I heard you, can you hear me? Hello, we're here. Thank you. Yeah.
Good morning, Delga Yanito calling in.
Morning. Morning Japao. Currently we have you, Mr. Yanito, and we have Dr. Nason calling in.
Alright, I'll be listening from uh city of Kestmerly.
Oh Yate Benjichi.
Oh that is true Curtis, how was your Thanksgiving?
It was a nice, dry turkey.
Oh good, we have a little bit of snow up here in my area. So it snow early this morning, so cold out here.
Yep, we got snowing in yesterday, so I'm taking a break today, just falling in.
Alright, well well listen in, thank you.
Oh ours. Good to leave the work session to another session.
Alright, well alright, so avoid any comments you mean to all that running online, even for this work session. Ryan, Yonin, Adrian. What would a roll call?
Good morning, the Chair members of Education Committee. Roll call for work session December 1st, 2025, 9:00 AM at the Department of Finance. Honorable Holynan Estegay. Honorable Holynan Estegay, they got on answer roll call, Honorable Ms. James.
W James, present.
Honorable Ms. James entered roll call, Honorable Dr. Andy Yes.
Present.
Honorable Dr. Andy Yes entered roll call, Honorable Jermaine Simonson. Honorable Jermaine Simonson did not enter roll call, Honorable George Spoh.
I'll be here ma'am, calling in, thank you.
Honorable George Spoh entered roll call via Honorable Curtis Yanito.
Honorable Curtis Yanito calling in.
Curtis Yanito entered roll call via Senator Cherry, you have your members present, few members absent, can you come to the floor and put yourself?
Alright, thank you very much, and so we're planning to move on to the next item. In this case, it's invitation, and so she, Honorable Dr. N, she says this is one invitation. Uh, she, Honorable Dr. N, can you assist us with the invocation?
Uh, yeah. Uh, good morning, everyone. And thank you. And to adding your team, the Beakers, Doc, and others, which is that, sure. That was listening online. Uh, brushing on, so we can try to get it, definitely before. What is on the way to that fish? The state that fish is saying. For this, I was assuming that one should be created. They will go to the British, we can bet. But we there and hopefully we don't. She will create movie there. There is everything that we're doing. We are wanting to show the system of immigration that we, that we are.
Have everybody involved because they all know the mission of the G O E N S. If you're what you're doing and it's a recognition also, if you're about to do the O D X, the O D X as well. And they also still have their option to um add a five day option to make up public as well, once the other session is shut. So with that, um was hiding on the form. So we want to go ahead.
Thank you, honorable Chair James and honorable members of the Health, Education and Human Services Committee. And thank you for allowing us this time to um go to present the amended personal policy manual to you in um the work session scheduled for today. We'll go ahead and have Ramondo go ahead and start with um where we left off from our last meeting. Thank you.
Good morning, uh, one of both committee members. Uh, thank you for having us uh here today to hopefully get this finalized and to be able to move it forward in the process. So again, my name is Ramondo. I am major operations and development specialist or manager now, actually, with the Department of Personal Management. And so um we didn't want to take a lot of time here today. I know last time it almost took almost two days for us to go through the whole thing. Um. We did big recommendations based off of our last time, the last meeting that we had. So we did incorporate some of those changes. Some of the changes were uh difficult, uh but we feel like this is a a good um draft that we had here to be able to move forward. And hopefully, again, your input um is is crucial with this. So um well, go ahead and move forward with with uh what we have here. So we take a look at the table of contents. Again, I did highlight the the major additions or major changes. So with that, I think one of the things that we wanted to go into was the hiring of temporary employees. And then we'll go into anti-retaliation. So really, I'm only going to cover the major portions that we uh made changes to just for the uh sake of not spending a whole entire day on this. That's okay with you all. Now, I did want to make sure that we are um again, in the sake of time, we could uh focus on the uh uh personal policy manual. I know there's probably other questions that we may have, but if you can um and expect to the personal policy manual, that would probably be the the best way to go about this. Again, we stick to time. So going over to the personal policy manual, we take a look at the uh hiring of temporary employees. That again, was a new addition there. Uh, we have seen that there are individual employees with the nomination that have been temporary status for quite some time. And that's unfortunate because they're not available, they're not able to accumulate annually sick leave. They cannot load the benefits. So they're um they're losing out on those uh amenities that we have or that we operate in the novel, the nomination. So we did uh add that in as a section of hiring temporary employees. A supervisor may hire a temporary employee uh as an interim replacement to provide short term staffing solutions to assist in the completion of a specific project or task. Potential applicants must have an individual assessment conducted to determine if they meet the minimum qualifications of the temporary position that applicant is being hired for. Once the applicant is being qualified, an individual assessment is not needed for a temporary position that um that are being filled. And so that's uh see that there, make that change. So it will not read position that are being that are being filled. Um. Number three, temporary employees must undergo a background check of that position that they are being hired for is a sensitive position. Number four, temporary employees must complete the required employment form, including tax documents, confidentiality agreement, and any department specific requirements. Number five, temporary employees are limited to six months of employment, at which time the term of employment will end. However, employment may be extended based on department needs and funding availability. And number six, the temporary, a temporary employee, employees personnel action form must be, shall be submitted to the D P M only if section three F two through four have been successfully completed and approved by D P M. So that again is the hiring of temporary employees. Okay, you don't know there were any questions on that section? Um. If not, moving into G, which is again anti-retaliation, uh also referred to at some places as the whistleblower policy. And any employee may report in good faith any suspected illegal, unethical, or unsafe conduct. Retaliation is strictly prohibited against anyone who does so. Reports may be made to a supervisor, department head, or D P M. All individuals are expected to cooperate with investigations, and anyone who engages in retaliation or no one we file with false report may face disciplinary action. This policy ensures a safe and transparent work environment. Okay, any questions on that?
On that one for G. In there also working by I will be there as you want. Uh, then do we have a or policy for or what would be their thoughts? That's still writing with that information. The who was roasting that? Is this very like how the agreement process was outlined in here in the policy?
Hello?
I mean, I've made a decision discussion on on how to move forward or certainly something shake out. Or whistle board or policy. That would be my question. How much say?
Right, just uh thank you for that question, honorable Chair James. Uh, to clarify, uh, are you asking if there's an actual form that we would submit, uh, basically a template? Uh, so no, we don't actually have an actual form um created. It's just everything that we always uh preach or that we always inform employees is that they provide the the details of the who, what, where are we, and why um in those reports. So who was the complaint made against? When did it happen? Where did it happen? What are the details surrounding uh this incident? Um, and as well as uh uh any witnesses that were present when this incident happened. Um, again, so uh with that form, uh, I'm sure something we can generate, we could uh discuss that as far as the new U R P coming in play of having a template created. But right now, we do not have a form um procedures. We do have procedures uh as well for um really established for sexual harassment. So that's kind of where we always um reference that. But uh that will be something, yes, that will, if this is approved, then we will take action on uh establishing those whistle board procedures as well.
So I mean. Alright, so I'm trying to understand how you got this sexual harassment. You want to follow the policies and how?
So I'm sorry to answer that question. So currently, in our personal policy manual that we have right now, the only time, the only time that retaliation is mentioned is in those personal pol, is in the sexual harassment section. So we, that is the only place that it has it right now in the current personal policy, you know. And then we do have those procedures established for sexual harassment. So sexual harassment has those outlined, and it does address uh retaliation from the department or program as well as uh from the individuals themselves that the complaint is being made against. So that's the reason why I referenced sexual harassment, because currently, right now, that's the only place that we mentioned retaliation or anti-retaliation occurring. So that's the the, again, the reason why I'm making that. So but yes, we'd elaborate more on that. But again, taking some of what's already in the sexual harassment section and applying that across the board. Um, again, when we're when we're talking about retaliation.
Alright, so there has to be a process this like um you know agreement process, we we're doing a separate section for the whistle board. Or we just identify it, um as point agreement since the separate section. But then sexual harassment is only the they find it's angles and what's such a it's under um contact of employees and we put vertical at work and it has it from all the world's actually under that. So we either have a question, it's just like um the reasons for the the reasons was lined up. Or it says follow sort of culture loyalty during this process, some of the similarities, step one. And then with step two, the step three, the step four, step five. It gives a uh step process. Compared to the sexual harassment in life is another four years. But that maybe provides for the of information about the policy, the definition. Um, it's not a step, a step process. Um, the things that can be considered uh sexual harassment. And then you have the report if we could. Under that, under that yeah, under that, I found you, if we can go to um what this gentleman said, it goes to you, you will go to a supervisor, you'll hit the supervisor the next high level uh supervisor. But it shall not indicate that some so then you have that section where you start explaining the investigation process. And we have all that lined out. So you have you have that investigation portion lined up. And so again, how is that feasible for you guys to do it for the whistle board to do that step by step process or by subject? You, that's right now, so some care about that. That's about it. Go ahead, Jim. We're just talking about before.
Alright, um, thank you, Mister uh Honorable Chair. And um I do see where you're going with that. And we can um add some more to the policy manual, so it makes sense and gives uh the employees information on how to um submit complaints or um to address issues regarding um retaliation. So uh, we were looking at, uh, like Mister Ba indicated that we were looking um at similar a similar reporting process as the sexual harassment. And um, we will um go ahead and develop a process for that to complement um the anti-retaliation policy that we have. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, thank you very much for that, Chair James. Uh, so yes, we've uh already in my mind, or we, I I am when I'm looking at it now, which you're how you're explaining it, is that in order for an individual to be protected by this policy, the following steps need to be the um followed or or process need to be established, like you're saying, step one, step two, step three, step four. Um, so I I I, we can definitely start working on that as well. You get that um finished right this week.
Uh, thank you. And and I think it would be nice to keep that under the section three, a little form of practice. And then the step by step process or the way to report in a fight should fall under the content of the whole session. And so there's those two parts in the policy that brings up and talks about the um into retaliation or the whistle board policy. But there will be two sections in the we'll see with one to step and talk about it, and we have this that and then under the code of conduct of employee that's why I like to see that. Alright, we can move on. And there's one other question from down if not.
Mister Tulky.
Oh, um, so now I just want to go.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I we need to do uh more of uh the policy. In here, it says any employee. How uh how about retaliation for appointees, public uh employee uh, I'm trying to say uh appointees, retaliate these uh employees. Can we identify somewhere in there that, you know, they're one of the supervisor that, you know, they're doing that to our employees retaliation. And we need to specify somewhere, or is there already covered in this manual? It is, I just get chair. Thank you.
Thank you again, um, for that. Like in the, under the sexual harassment, step by step, you talked about no retaliation of who reported that sexual harassment. Um, and then the education also indicates somewhere that there will be protection against the whistle board before we indicated the policy. And there'll be no retaliation against rules as well. Alright, so that will be before you want to move back to
Okay, thank you for that question, Delegate Tuchy. Also, yes, we can, and I I just don't know if we're finching on ethics and rules policy under um retaliation by elected officials. That would be something I would need to speak to uh or the Department of Justice, Sage, on that matter. Sage, if you're able to answer that, if we can insert that in for elected officials or retaliation from elected officials. Local acquainties, okay. Yes, we can definitely add that in there for local acquainties. She was in zoom. Alright, so uh moving forward, uh, the next section is going to be under interview expenses for key employees. I'll go ahead and we're going to screen down to that section there.
Do you mean
Since you're on your, Ramondo.
Mine?
Yeah.
It's clear up. There.
Alright, so under background checks, again, we did make some changes there for uh under background check. Um. So referrals, and then we have also the interview expenses. We have the interview expenses for key positions. And then we have some changes all the way to the background check portion. So uh interview expenses was moved, originally was um a a different section number, but we did move it. And again, we did make the and there the applicant were interviewed for key position, and we reimburse for interview expenses subject to the interviewing program's availability of funds. The division director will be responsible for designating key positions jointly with the Department of Personal Management. Reimbursement of interview expenses will be limited to one trip to an interview site and actual reasonable expenses, including commercial fare, car rental, personal vehicle mileage, mails, lodging, and other incidental costs. Reimbursement shall not exceed the current travel expense rates established by the nomination and must be supported by receipts. Again, that was a section that we did, we had moved. We did make um changes here. I'm sorry, didn't highlight that, but it was under the physical qualifications um on the on my manual here, we added, and we struck out that entire language where it says must possess and maintain minimal physical qualifications. But we did add in, in accordance with the law, the following guidelines will apply. An employer applicant otherwise best qualified for a job shall not be denied selection for retention and employment because of his or her disability, so long as reasonable accommodation can be made that will allow that person to perform his or her employment duties. A, a person selected shall possess and maintain a minimum qual, physical qualification necessary to perform essential duties of the position. The Department of Personal Management, with the assistance of the program manager, shall designate those positions for which medical examination shall be required prior to employment. Whenever the supervisor has reason to believe that the employee's health is adversely affecting his or her job performance, the employee may be required to undergo a medical examination by a licensed physician. The results, the results shall be used to determine continued employment.
I have a couple of questions. So before we get to physical qualifications, are you going to really back to in your page? Application for employee. And that is on page my initial interview time, yeah, first time to be
Page fourteen, application for employment.
Okay, so on number two, I have a question. Though it indicates um that they submit through a portal. And then it seems like they only get a response difference in but how will they receive any applicant receiving response at the application?
Yes, so with the new E R P, the they force platform we're utilizing, you will send them an email letting them know that the application has been received for employment.
Okay, and then number three is that applications shall be completed online. So is that fully migrating to public, or do we still have publicity needs to hand letter that?
It's going to be uh to where it will be on online.
But and then on number four, it says to submit an official transcript. So I've always had an issue with like official transcripts, because they're no longer five dollars. When I was in college, they're like twenty five dollars. And I don't know if there's an opportunity in that clause on number four, if they could maybe request an unofficial because those are dated, or if they could get a copy from onsite, they have it there, like the latest one. I'm just thinking about the cost, because it does cost, I don't know how many institution institutions are charging, but the highest I've learned is twenty five dollars. And if you're requesting multiple, that's we are eight hundred dollars to be happening, yeah. So it's just something to consider. And then on so number two, going on to the next qualification assessment. So it says, the qualification assessment shall be completed within five working days after the closing date unless the position is not activated within ten. My question though is if that can be worded in a way where you still have the assessments that are still conducted. Because if the position is O U F, then I don't know what a typical wait time is for any assessment to be done. Um, because in my interpretation, it's like if we have a position that's O U F, I don't need, for example, within the office of the station, then I submit. But how long do I have to wait?
World finance falling.
Thinking that if you do a, continue to use like five working days, even if it's O U F, I think that would be helpful. And then I noticed you guys added a new number provided. Um, and that says political opposition are excluded from qualification assessments, the individual assessments. But I think um we need language in there that indicates at least encouraged to meet qualifications and assessments, even though it's not, it's it's kind of it's clearly them all together. But I think it would just be in the best interest if if we as an affiliation certain position that they're at least encouraged to meet qualifications. Um, but I think the ability to let that whole position can be but I think just every important definition, take the position that you are at least encouraged to meet those qualifications. So those are um, that'd be my comments to that question.
Thank you for the the, for those remarks and those comments of, again, any news, the doctor, any news? Um, so I'll uh I'm not sure how much of a difference it would be if we went to unofficial. Is that something we feel like we should probably do?
Thank you for the question, Honorable Miss. And I do feel that um that is reasonable, and we can make that adjustment. And as you mentioned, it is pretty very costly to get an offer. And our practice was in the past that anytime an applicant submitted an official transcript, that we would return it back to the applicant if they did not qualify, or if they submitted multiple copies. So uh again, just um knowing the the cost of the um transcripts that the um students or the applicants have to submit. And with ref, with reference to number five for local uh role positions, um, it was the practice of D P M to do qualification assessments on all political appointees. Uh, for the record, and um as you mentioned, that um it is encouraged that they meet the minimum qualifications of the position. Thank you.
Okay, you do that language too.
Yeah. Thank you.
And then also your other remark about assessments being played. So in our procedures, we do have a stated that um even if they are open until fill, they'll still be immediately done, and then they'll be forward over. And if they feel like they're, then they'll go through the process. And if they make that um determination they want to hire this person, then we will close the position. But if there was any anything pending, then those need to be included as well. But we do have that in our procedures that um all assessments will be immediately done, not to seem, they don't have to wait for a closing date again, because there's no closing date. But we do have those in our procedures, yes.
Well, I have a question in regards to that um assessment. And uh, let me just tell you that this recently, I think last week, the employee came to me, um and I, I just told to um to give a letter and agreed that assessed it. So um, she had an assessment done upon her position there in finance. And so it was, first one was done by Smargo, and then another one, second time, and there's the other stack that did the assessment. But this individual, after the first assessment, that was
But this individual, after the first assessment that was done by Smargo, she had gradually, or she had got her information that she has her bachelor's and all of that. And so that time, she was told she didn't have a bachelor's and work experience. And then so the last one that they indicated because she had gotten her bachelor's and all that, she submitted her transcript, but the next assessment and then the last one that they assessed it just told her that you still don't qualify because you don't have the, the knowledge experience. And so and this individual had worked at HR, at HR block. And then some other accounting service and then currently is an accounting position. But she was still told that she didn't follow at all because this time around she didn't have the experience. But I think she submitted that through any contest on this, if that means she already knows that she, maybe she has good, rich thought already. So in, in those kinds of scenarios, how would you address it with staff or board, they follow other table or penalties? Because this, this staff has found, has all her letters, so stuff that I seen, that I read, and it just did not flow through the process. And it seemed like the last one that did an assessment just went by what everyone's been assisting and threw a bag at her. And, and so that's something, um, I think we lose a lot of those employees coming through that tried to apply them once they are done with quality, once they receive their bachelor's degree. They just went insane. Wow, and, and we're losing all those individuals that just have now obtained the bachelor's degree. I know one of the responses will come back, well, this on the program, because the program is going to be the PCQ. The program indicates in there the qualification was the one with experience. Um, and then we have an issue between women qualification, we have preferred qualification as well. So there was a discrepancy there, but I think the individual put all of the grievance letter, she and you know, you speak from, I, I really might see how this is going to be handled now. But at that point of assessment, how do you address it with the staff based off our current table of penalties and our current policy that is held out? There, there was the new apology letter that was sent back from the department. Um, or even just a call to say, hey, you know what, I overlooked this area or anything, nothing like that has, has happened yet. So if I can just get an understanding of how we address those kinds of situations and scenarios, I'm assuming this is not the only one that you guys have dealt with this. Um, but again, it just requires everything to find you that position to be built by an individual that does qualify. But now it's one of your responses. And then so hopefully there will be no retaliation issues coming from DPM um, towards the staff. Um, coming from the staff towards the applicant. Um, if she was hired, but how do we address this? How do you guys address that at DPM? Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Honorable James. In situations like that, we had an issue like that for um, some time and one of the things that we did do was we met with our staff, we informed them that um, we need to be consistent in the way that we're doing the qualification assessments. And yes, we have seen situations where at one point they were deemed qualified and um, they applied again for another position and they were being not qualified for the position. So what we uh, when I was there at DPM, uh, what I did was I issued a memo to all of our staff, letting them know that from moving forward because of some of these issues that keep coming up, what we needed to do or what the recruitment staff or whomever is assigned to do qualification assessment is that they check into the record to see if an applicant previously applied for a position. And if they did, uh, check to see whether they qualified or not. And then update their qualification assessment. But there are times when they overlook, were still overlooking that process and that's where we saw these discrepancies. So when the applicants appeal their qualification assessment, it doesn't go back to the same evaluator, it goes to the human resources director, Miss, Mrs. Bigtham. So um, we have minimized some of those, but then still sometimes we see that um, it's still occurring. So what we have been doing is at the time was meeting with the staff to let them know that we have to be very careful and yes, some of the applicants get very discouraged and upset with us and they say, you know, you qualified me before and I still have the same qualifications and even more experience now. Or either I have more education. I may have my, have had my bachelor's degree at the time, now I have my master's degree. So in situations like that, she does meet with the staff to let them know, which one adds me, yes.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Um, thank you for your question. I must have been a recent appeal, um, I haven't seen it, I think that was out last week. But I will take a look at that, I did see some appeals on my desk. They didn't have an opportunity when an applicant is deemed not qualified, that they would submit an appeal to me and I will look at that. So I did see some, I didn't catch the names, but I will take careful look at all of those, which is what we do, we make sure that um, if there is any um, questions or any push, um, any appeals being submitted, we really carefully look at it to be sure that they are given credit for all the work and the, the education that we have with the rest of the so that, that is what we do and it's ironic it just came up because today I'm talking to the recruit team so that they know that we need to really, we look at our processes. Particularly um, maybe reinvent the, the procedures at some time. So that we can embrace folks that are applying for the positions. We really need to get on that to try to get people hired. That's our main focus, so we will adjust that carefully. Thank you.
The, the last one that did the assessment was pretty good. That was that there's a trend. That I see in English, but you shouldn't have to on your desk, I guess. All right, that's one. I have another follow up. So regarding the accommodations, I know I mentioned this last time with the nominations advisory company, disability. I don't know, if you can let me know with the last day it could be with them to propose, I know you have a general statement, but I think it doesn't do much justice to for just indicating that you're going to accommodate uh, any of our employees who have a disability. And I was trying to fill them in a little shortly quick here because I, I did cite in here that he but this, this updated manual doesn't address any employees who develop a disability. Not applying with a disability, um, but any of our um, for example, I know a staff who, who had a body replacement done. And this staff, you know, the mobility is not entirely there, obviously, because this individual's rehab. So prior to that surgery, assuming that everything was okay. Post-surgery, then you have some developed issues. So you know, I do have it in here, but if you can just cite it in here or citing here where part of the conversation with, with the last thing is still what NAIC and then um, if this manual doesn't be addressed those, you got developed disability. If you, to get those, then thank you.
Thank you for the question, Honorable Niss. I believe it was about a year or a year and a half ago, I don't have my notes in front of me. Thank you.
Question, Dr. Yanito. Really quick, yes, we can definitely add into any new, as well as any newly developed disabilities, I don't see an issue with putting that in there.
So then one recommendation I have is because it's in the year, I think maybe with the the next on, is to schedule time when we have, just to indicate clearly that you propose these changes to the manual, and then any recommendations once they, they also I think would be helpful, including the new officiating policy regarding the staff who can balance this.
Honorable Delegate Yanito.
Yes, good morning. Thank you. We're my, my hand raised. I have a question on like these qualified individual. You know, you mentioned, you know, some with master degrees and so forth. How difficult is it to work with those kind of individual with like high qualification?
Delegate Yanito, can you please clarify your question, please?
How difficult is it to work with like individual that has high qualification like, you know, qualification like a master's degrees and so forth?
In terms of conducting qualification assessments, uh, normally we don't have any issues with them because they usually provide all the information necessary. And it's not only with masters, it's uh, any individual. I think that a lot of times they um, may forget to attach certain documents, but they're usually pretty clear with the um, their educational credentials as well as their years of experience. But one of the things that we have, we were experiencing was when we moved from the hard copy of the application to the online portal. That's where um, some of the information wasn't being provided, but I believe that the majority of those issues have been addressed and were able to receive all the necessary information that we need to conduct a qualification assessment. Thank you.
Follow up? At the workplace, their performance, is there like a special treatment they're expecting? If that, um, if they have like a master degree or something like that? Their, um, I guess their duty performance is what I'm asking for. Do they have to have the, uh, some kind of special treatment to uh, keep them on board? Because um, I hear a lot of complaints that, you know, they say that, you know, I'm overqualified, I'm not, you know, I didn't get hired because of that. That's why I'm asking that question, how did they perform at their job description?
Thank you for the question. In most situations, uh, those are handled by the supervisor, but um, they're as far as special treatment, everyone is should be treated the same um, within their employment. And um, there are situations where their qualifications may exceed the minimum qualifications. And in those situations, the only thing that the supervisor might request is to pay them a little more than the entry level salary. Otherwise, they should be performing uh, up to expectations and when an employee is hired, they do have a performance appraisal form, which provides them with um, what their goals and objectives are as well as the um, performance standards. So um, I am not aware of any special treatment that they should be um, receiving. Their supervisors would um, provide that kind of information to them when they come on board, so they know what's expected of them. Thank you. The other thing I want to add is that there has been concerns and complaints about programs informing the applicants that they're overqualified and that's why they don't, they weren't selected for the job. However, um, all of our positions have minimum qualifications. And if they meet the minimum qualifications, then they are referred and we've been asking the applicants that say that they received notice that they're overqualified, but no one's been able to provide us with that kind of information. And this goes back for years, but all we do at DPM is check for the minimum qualifications. If they meet that, then they, they are referred to the program. So I'm not sure if um, this has been happening at the department level during the interviews, but I've never seen um, any information coming back to DPM indicating that the applicant is overqualified. Thank you.
Mr. Toad here.
Honorable Paul.
Thank you. Our policies are saying that minimum qualification. Why the heck do we have uh, over a thousand vacancy? If we have minimum qualification, everybody should be following. Or the position should have been full. The way I look at it, it's no matter how good we can put this manual together, policy is the administration and the personnel are violating. Violating, I mean, there's a lot of body system that occurs, that's the way you get hired. So, and that's the biggest problem we have everywhere, even the IHS is like that, so. No matter what, how we craft or manual, still gonna be, just look at the people that are selected through politics, you know? That needs to be stopped somewhere, so that's the only way I think we can get back on track. The way I look at is how tough we put this regulation or policy in place, we're still gonna have problems. There's no consistent on the assessment. There's a different way of people, you know, looking to these matter. So I think that's where the biggest problem is. You scratch my back, I'll scratch your back, that attitude. That's why a lot of people don't want to apply. You already know that this individual related to, close relation to this individual. Or they go around bending the policy and get hired. They see it. Our people are not crazy. I mean, they're not, they know what's going on. So I work with IHS same thing. When I fill out the application for a, a job with IHS, the question was any person or relatives working in this facility or department, I put no. And here, when I went in, most of them are in-laws, sisters, brothers, running the clinic. So it, I mean, this, I don't know. It, I mean, this, I don't know why we're spending this much, nobody's gonna enforce it. But I just have to follow and how it's been crafted, so. I have a problem with uh, political appointee. Uh, retaliation, uh, it it against the employees threatening them. Somewhere it needs to be stopped. Other than that, that would be my comment.
Thank you, Honorable uh, Thor for your comment and. We uh, at the Department of Personnel Management, we do not make the selections. The selections are being made by the um, position owners or the department managers. However, uh, we are seeing some. Uh, issues there with the untimely selection of qualified individuals that were referred, so. We have been discussing this at the department level to determine how best to address that and possibly. Taking the um, interview process. At the Department of Personnel Management level with um, the hiring manager. Or the staff that's going to be supervising the position. At the interview table with us to ensure that um. All the selections are made according to policy and. Uh, yes, we do not know um, the whether or not individuals are related. Although there is a question on the application indicating if they are. Related to anyone that's employed with the Navajo Nation and within what department. But uh, many times the applicants do not complete the, that question. Or sometimes they're not aware of um, where individuals' relatives are working, so. Uh, yes, uh, there is currently no enforcement, although at the department level, although we. Do um. Include policies such as that to. Avoid any nepotism within the um, hiring process. Thank you.
All right, you may continue.
Okay, all right, so yes, so. Uh, last we finished off with physical qualifications and then we kind of bounced around there, so uh, next one and then, sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry.
We can see that we have the um, positions for the uh. You don't have to go through all of these new kind of assessment, but. You know, I can't, you know, I have to think that a lot of these positions that are political appointees, they're in an administrative position. Well, we should meet at least a bare minimum of qualifications for their experience or education. Because, you know, they're they're responsible for answering and providing advice, you know, to the um. Like the office OBDP as well as the, you know, division, you know, divisions and departments of Navalation and then. Their technical advisors to the standing committees as well. So there's no requirement for a minimum qualification. Um, we, we, we don't know what, how detailed or even if they know how to research. You know, and go on the um, Navalation, it's um, if the information that's different Navalation, they go on to the state level. Or the federal level, because uh, these professionals do touch on that. And they do need to know, you know, what what uh, the process that we legislative process or the. Executive process for state levels are and also in in um, Washington at the federal level, so that they can provide some. And comprehensive um. Technical advice. As to but um, they can. Provide that, you know, confidence and um, position favors, you know, for Navalations who are. Are are legitimate, should present. So I I don't think that we can go without some kind of expertise that. Even we're putting these people into place because then they just pass it down to their destiny. To do all that work and and that's not the, you know, the. I mean, what are we paying them for? It's their chance and Navalation can benefit from them. And also the qualifications on the entry level for employees. Um, yeah, I did bring this up the last time and it's like first time applicants, you know, they have degrees, but they don't have any work experience within their degree. But um, perhaps in the board, there'd be indicated qualifications at the entry level. But they have a um, degree or certificate or a number of years of experience in that field. And then that way they can meet either or, then we're not turning away. Academically educated individuals, you know, and it's almost like we're, we're, we're willing to accept less than. You know, we, we're ideally like an educated person in the field, but we're willing to accept somebody that's. In the number of years of experience working with you, but not necessarily educated in the field. So we're accepting with, you know, a person less than. Uh, when we talk about qualifications and the. And, and the work habits can be dealt with if a person only has a degree with no experience. That the work habit can be dealt with in a nine day probationary period, you know, whether they develop those implement work habits. And the um, I'm just concerned about the equity because we're losing a lot of, we're turning away. A lot of degree holding applicants and and they're looking elsewhere and um, other companies. State level, other governmental, etc. You can sit here.
Thank you.
Sage, you can answer that question. All right, thank you. Uh, I believe you do have Sage from the Department of Justice online and she will be able to answer that question uh, for Miss Benali.
Good morning and honorable Chair and honorable Committee members. Um, in response to that question, many of the positions. Um, that are political appointees are statutorily created, so the requirements. Are in the statute and if we want to add additional. Qualifications for political appointees, then the statute would need to be amended. The PPM. Can't override statutory provisions, so any. Policy that we put into the PPM that conflicts with the statute wouldn't be legally effective. So I suggest um, uh, statutory amendments to address that concern. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the response, Sage. Uh, can you email the statute that you were referring to um, to Miss Benali and she can forward it to us at. The Heskey Committee? It sounds that we need to address that first before we go further to give me a new uh, personnel policy to achieve. We'll wait for your decision.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Chair. Yes, I I'm actually working with Honorable Delegate Dr. Andy Nez on a similar. Or a related request, um, so we're working on compiling a list of statutes, so. It's, it's gonna be each separate statute that creates these positions that would need to be updated. For example, the Auditor General is a statutory position, the qualifications for that position is in that statute. Um, and so whenever I compile the list, I will be sure to include Miss Benali in uh, the entire Heskey Committee on that.
So what, what, what are you referring to out of now? That you shared is the information with us, can you email that information to us right now while we wait?
Uh, Honorable, uh, Honorable Chair, I don't have a list of the statutes, so this is gonna be several different statutes. That would require amendments. I don't have that list available. So this would be.
If it's not available, then why are you referring to?
I'm providing legal advice to the question that was asked, so in response to Miss Benali's question. How would we address the qualification issues for political appointees? My legal advice is to do a legal analysis of the code. And find all of the positions that are statutorily created and make those changes in each of those statutes.
And you, you don't have that listing, but you're referring to it, right?
I do not have the list, but I am aware that there are many statutorily created positions. That would require these amendments and I have been working with Dr. Andy Nez on this, we've discussed this matter and he's aware. That there is several of these separate statutory provisions. And we are working with him to get a list and provide recommendations on a related issue.
We go to, thank you Sage, let me go to Honorable Nez. Yes, thank you. Uh, so the stuff, colleagues, everyone, so I do have a legislation that I'm working on and it's to. Uh, which I haven't done yet, so I can uh, eventually, or we get to it, but what it's doing is providing um. Anyone who's in a uh, deleg- delegated or interim or acting position. Um, if they have the supervision capacity that they cannot terminate them to. And so part of that discussion, then we started looking at those that are statutorily outlandish. Like the superintendent of schools, like the auditor general's position and others that are separate and not. Wholelessly part of the personnel manual, because those are separate um, distinctions that are defined. So for example, um, the controller, the attorney general, those are in to NNCs that have. So that list is not readily available, but it's something that we're um, compiling, so that when we address this, then we. Identify each of those uh, provisions that are specifically to those existing positions. Um, so. Uh, and how to include this discussion, which is why I move back to my recommendation that even though it's not. Uh, those that are politically at will, but you still encourage it um. Due to some of the examples that um, Miss Benali shared. Thank you, Jeff.
All right, so uh, the reason why I ask is if we work on it to go to the practical policy and. And if such one through the solo cycle, even also to follow the process, right, let's keep the page. Or did it, I'm straight to work with the legislation. Because if it goes through the line sixty four review process, I see DOJ originally stopped to hold on to this. Until the statutory, like political appointee legislation, and see how that is true. Because if we can't, then we can include this information with personal policy and the whole will be. Another excuse for DOJ to hold on something that we want to make changes in. So uh, that's where I'm trying to get better and better than what, what is your listing, what are you referring to? Because it's going to stop there, DOJ will do. We insert that into this part of the next. Did you respond safely?
Yes, thank you, uh, Honorable Chair. Um, a few things, uh, DOJ doesn't have to approve any of this. This is um, within, you know, uh, Heskey Council's control. If it's statutory or policy in the PPM. Um, you know, I'm also offering legal advice, so this is my legal advice for how to achieve. What you're requesting in the best way. If you want to make these changes in the PPM. They will not be legally effective for these statutory positions. If you want to move forward and do it anyways, that's a policy decision. Um, and you also have your legislative council, I would, you know, defer to them if they have. Advice to provide or if they um, have different thoughts on it, then I'm happy to hear from them. But again, this is a decision that's up to you as leadership and DOJ doesn't have to approve it. I'm simply providing advice on how to achieve what you are trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Sage.
Thank you, Chair. The letter at the end was that um. Whether the Justice is providing legal advice and acknowledgement and. With that being said, as, as it moves forward. Was for sure, but. It is aware, as we've heard about legal um, advice from the Department of Justice. But I would say, I mean, the options are, I should make sure that assessing is filled. Forward regards to the legislation of the nation. Uh, so assessing this decision, okay. Stay close to legislation and make sure that that's, we don't. So I had, that is sufficient. Access C, uh, to discuss this matter in this session.
All right, thank you. Um, so if we can um, get a written document from Sage. Advice to the, we really got advisement, that is a problem, I don't know how we should go to move forward. On this personal policy, so. And when you think you would be able to provide that to the committee, Sage?
Um, thank you, um. I I guess I can defer to the committee on what you think is a reasonable timeline, but it's gonna require a review of the entire code. To make sure that we catch every position that's in the stat, you know, statutorily created. So it's gonna, you know, it it requires a lot of research, which is why we don't have the list available right now. Uh, but I I can provide it by whatever date the the committee would like to have it by.
All right, so we'll, we'll wait for your um, letter. Uh, under advisement as your legal advisement coming from DOJ and then although. On, or we could put a stop to this part of the legal session. Until we get that document from your office as well too. That is not a little fair part of the law for us and how we should be moving forward with this personnel policy. Uh, that would be, that would be my recommendation is to to stop now.
Um, Chair, Chair, Mister Thor?
All right, Honorable Thor?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, all these advice and opinions are the, then it takes in. I don't know how long it's gonna take, uh, they need to speed it up if they can. Of course, all that, they need kids not coming out, so I would somehow, you know. Etched out these opinion or what we asked for. And also we need a good uh, legal counsel for our Heskey Committee. Yeah, yeah, I just, my concern, Chair, so, thank you.
Um, Janice?
Thank you, Honorable Chair, members of the Health Education Human Services Committee. Um, I've, I remember this uh, legislation request. By um, Honorable Nez and I believe I did some preliminary research on those um, positions. So I can uh, work with Sage on getting the list that I have already compiled because it, she is correct. There are many, many, many citations to the different political appointees that are um. That are in existence across the Navajo Nation, both within the legislative and executive branch. That are in existence across the Navajo Nation, both within the legislative and executive branch. So I did do some of that preliminary research and I I'll uh work with Sage on getting a list. Sage? Thank you Chair.
Uh thank you, um. I I Sage, can you give us a recommendation on when you can give the document, the written document to us? Can you really go to that?
Uh yes Chair, I can, it's two weeks, I'm I'm just trying to think of what's reasonable, I don't know what the committee is thinking, but. We can do it on whatever timeline the committee needs it by. I I think two weeks at least would be very helpful.
So that would be December twelfth, okay? Which day will be good for you to. Sage, which day will be good for you, that is December twelfth or December fifteen?
Um. So the twelfth is fine, I can do the twelfth.
The twelfth, okay. Um, again, committee members, I leave my recommendation, I don't know your thoughts. We should put a stop to within the work session with PPM at this time. Then continue on what we receive and legal advisement. Uh we have a document of the DOJ. Well, we could have you like, we can reschedule after. The twelfth to do another work session. I think we continue. So I have uh Honorable Chair saying continue, uh Honorable Toth, your thought?
Again, what's the question, sir?
Uh Honorable Niko, Honorable Senator Barry, your thought? Um my. Uh Honorable Nez, it begins.
My, my question, Honorable Toth and Honorable Niko and Vice Chair. Is that uh while we await the legal uh opinion or legal advisement, excuse me. From Sage of DOJ, where she said you'll take her, probably you'll help her tell the seven to twelve, and we should go by that. Legal advice better to us. My question was, do you want to continue or to push on policy manual or um? Do my recommendation, which was to just put a stop to the personnel policy manual until we obtain that. Um legal advice of DOJ. Would you reschedule work session with PPM again? So.
Mister. Mister Toth, Abila, um it's not us, you can do that. I don't know about the rest.
Do, which one? Stop or continue moving on?
Uh well, can reschedule, stop this uh. Policy and we can come back when we get all the information, sir. That's my recommendation.
Honorable Niko?
I concur with Toth here.
Alright, so Honorable Vice Chair is here as well, your your thought? So far we have a four, a three.
Okay, and the um. So the decision is to stop right here?
Stop here and wait for the legal advisement on the point of DOJ Sage? Or down this, what's the law of the law?
Now, is the um we're stopping? The to get a legal advisement on the one specific area that you that Dr. Andy Nez was talking about? Like the um. And I believe as I was listening in online, then that question was, what um how much? I I don't, I'm trying to state this right, maybe the authorities of a politically appointed position? Being able to, I believe you mentioned something ago, but is that what that is? Like, do they have the ability to um fire people or that part? Okay. Did I get that wrong?
Uh let me, uh there's a question, let me go to our legal uh counsel, either that or Candace. To clarify for uh question?
Okay. Chair, I'm ready. Candace, since she's done some um preliminary research on it, so she might have an idea, so. Candace, please, I hope this turned up what you that what you think. Um will be best, I'm trying to assess.
Thank you, um Ms. French? Ms. Candace French?
Hi, thank you Chair, sorry, I was having trouble unmuting myself. Um yeah, so the question is, is can we clarify for Delegate Simonson? What the request is, or I'm sorry, I I couldn't understand what the question was.
Honorable Chair?
Uh Ms. French, I'll go ahead and uh just follow up with my colleagues here in a bit, that's okay. Um I will uh go ahead and proceed with um. What the group here wants to do in terms of um wanting to put this on hold, did you think till December twelfth?
Well, um well, Sage from DOJ said. Give her at least two weeks and that, then I asked her what days would work for her, either December twelfth or the fifteenth. Uh when she can give us that letter? And she stated December twelfth. So once we receive that letter. Then we would have to come back and figure out another date to do another work session. Uh to schedule another work session, so there's no. Work session at the moment until we receive that document, DOJ to legal advisement.
Okay, so also this in general, we are really nowhere near completion, right, of reviewing all the changes. Maybe just started, we've only been out to this one hour. So we started, when was our next, I mean, I don't I don't think we were gonna complete it today. But what were upcoming days that we were wanting to entertain more work sessions?
Alright, I think it's putting out the door to the agenda in general, because that's what we're headed with it, but.
Yeah.
Again, this has to be resolved. Because if we want to move forward to adding other similar scenarios, we will get this presentation done on DOJ. In this case, this month was more of a political appointees. Um and and then whatever list that you provide us, those those who gain back handle. Personally, policy manual, how we proceed with adding or deleting from the personal policy.
Okay, uh thank you for that Chair. Um I I, you know, I I think I'm finding since we're nowhere near completion. Um if if Sage document helps clarify some things, but I also just wanna mention that um a few days ago, maybe a month. I don't remember when, last week or two ago, I heard Delegate Charles Slater saying he had dropped maybe a legislation. That had to do um maybe with political appointees. And he said this on the floor and um he had mentioned that it's been several months now and so. I don't know who was assigned that document and is it related or is it um? Is it something similar that doesn't include, you know, these these pieces in terms of appointment of political uh appointees? Also, I know Title Two, which, you know, really has authority to. Um right now and then, you know, Title Two, there's some, you know, uh wording in there too. And I think if there was a way for all the groups to come together, because I don't know if, you know, and we'll see. When similar legislations come in, I don't know if they convene to say, um you know, we should all really just. You know, have one legal person working on it to for efficiency. Now, or I don't know if there's like three different requests and three different legal people are working on it and they don't know. So I don't know about that communication, it's like not that, but um I would really. Yeah, I think what you're working on, it is a good thing, because I know as we were trying to amend Title Two, the. Uh times that we did have our meeting, um that was an assignment for our legal team was to look in the. Um the the parts that we were changing to look in other parts of the statute that might convene. And where things might might not, might need to be changed, so. Any case, I think really people should. Uh at least we'll see, legal team should talk to each other to see who all is working on some sort of legislation. And what the, you know, where um you all might be able to combine and um. Maybe uh you know, however you see from there, so if you can, you can, Chair, yeah.
Okay, so so that um. There was that recommendation is um legal. Uh that then was, yes, I can read on it as well. Regarding, you know. Um and then we'll be, that's a letter, one called, that you can hold down, five to nine.
Uh yes, thank you Chair, so uh. I I disagree, I don't think, I think we should continue, a majority of this PPM manual is on our existing political appointees. I understand where it leads, we from the talks about um. Appointed officials, et cetera, I do have in here in my notes, and then I'm gonna, I took the liberty to go through this again and. And and I'm not gonna waste any time, I'm gonna send you an email regarding all of this, because I do have. A comment on here that I think would we require research in this regard, regarding division workers. As in this manual, you're allowing division workers to make some of these uh large scale decisions, but currently, you know, we have division workers who are nine. And we also have division workers who are. And we we, it was a title that came up like permission of mission director, um and so. I'm gonna include all of that in the email, um to my colleagues, personally, I think we should just continue because it does that. Um primarily our navigation employees, um and. Uh I I can take care of that, I'll agree with David, um but. The other portion is just our capacity to see uh appointed officials, which is why we, I think we just convert terms like encourage or. Other necessary verbiage that will allow some capacity that the nation takes a condition on these appointed officials. Uh so thank you again for where it sounded like we're gonna conclude this portion of the session, thank you.
Alright, thank you, um Honorable Dr. Nez, and then also, if there's anything else that I. That I I talked to Grant about. So somebody has to just take the the responsibility that needs to be at the table. It it is really on call for, DOJ is here, they know that they have a staff. Uh but you guys saw me playing with each other, people getting ready to still be doing, putting names on PPMs. And here's you have that staff, right, a month of that, almost a month of service without being paid. It's a relation, mine about paid last week. And and so. Those those kind of things that we continue to encounter, I explained that whole situation to you there last week. Um but that needs to also be inserted in this, you know, policy, or somebody may say. Takes some actions, some individuals to uh employees that have dedicated their time uh to the national. So it's either going to be a fall from the program or. Or is it gonna be both, then that needs to be rated. I mean, the second thing during the sun is this, something in the staff, I guess it's it's on the top for for. Not the process of yield. Oh, this is not the first that we've heard. I think all of us, there'll be a half, third similar situation regarding. Pay not being processed. Um and this, or it's just sitting on somebody else's desk because they're on leave or. Well, it's always these, talking, we're sitting on budget or the budget, or the one dollar or the other. It's still the back and forth, and somewhere we need to, making sure that these staff. Receive the consequences of being ready to spend at least thirteen days. Second, timely feeling again, determine the condition. That they don't have to do process of payoff. For an individual, at the same time, I know there are programs that also try to roll around. The process by hiring the individual. Um again, if we, programs do that as well. They're bringing on the person. Giving them false information, oh, you know, certainly in the period, but. Reality they should hire is supposed to be totally paid, and we're gonna fully complete. Um so, so that's another issue that we divide among the programs that are trying to make assistance of. The period. So it it is about that, and we think some of those little cases. For us and we have, the nation has to pay those individuals out. So what do the legal commission create, so that the workers go and all are, whatever, all of that stuff, so. They can start adding up all those monies that will need us. As of um. Issues, efficiencies, so maybe they pay that, we have to really, you see. What we have done, um. There is no others, the manual going in, it is in, it's completed, um our work session is regarding this. Um personnel policy manual, and then I would switch the force, let's move your schedule, you just to start off over right now, Jay, maybe. They talk with the, this, I got who to see it from DOJ, so. Any other questions, I'll give you some time for those issues.
Um yeah, I'm sorry, thank you very uh much for your comments and remarks, uh honorable S committee members, uh. This is something that we've been have working on for a long time and uh we're hoping to get it done, but I we definitely understand your concerns. Um especially when we're talking about Delegate uh Dr. Andy Nez's legislation, we do address acting status several times within this personal policy manual. And we also do address delegation of authority as well within the personal policy manual. Um so that's something that uh would need to be considered when moving forward with this. Also with the implementation of an ERP system as well, uh what you have now before you. Is gonna be irrelevant by mid-January, it's gonna, so because we're already proposing new amendments to be made, but since we've gone so far. With this process, some of the things that the ERP is gonna be doing now is gonna change a few things within the policy, which is the recruitment and selection. Because now we're utilizing uh, uh we're not doing paper format anymore, everything will be electronic. So those are gonna be some changes that will be, you'll see in the next one, so um. I just wanted to make you guys aware of that as well, uh so. If you want to continue on with this one, or if you would like for us to move in to the changes that we're gonna probably have with the ERP system. That would be the 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 part of that question that I have for the S, for S.
Yes.
Uh um thank you, I think at this point. Um we'll just continue the way we're moving along, but at this point, since we have even started a new system or. We're not fully um transitioning to that system. And I don't think we'll be able to continue that same, that DOJ transition. Will be able to transition from January as well. Uh needs gonna take time for for all departments, everyone to, you know, that four, 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 one hundred percent transition. So with that, Honorable Chair?
Uh yeah, thank you Chair, so I think um. While your followers simultaneously addressing this, I think. Well, that system may change, I think, which is how about currently. What what you're making sound like there would be a change, but I think it's all all the change. So I think the same way we address the social media policy, I think that could be something that's just kind of complements as we're moving along. Um because I think that the system is only gonna address a portion of this when there are other um. Issues to kind of clarify and then other recommendations that I have here. Uh you sure?
Alright, if you're aware of the study?
Yes, uh I'd like to thank you for your time this morning and also uh. The personnel policy manual that we're reviewing right now. Applies only to uh. Employees' regular status and um temporary employee, seasonal employees. uh of the executive and legislative branches. It uh does not apply to political at will. And I I know that under the conduct of employee there um there is a section that uh talks about elected um individuals. And that's when they're if they are currently employed and if they become elect uh if they become uh elected, like say a chapter official. Um, it does give some um information on the process if they were to get elected. They could um continue to serve in their regular status position as long as it doesn't uh conflict with their elected duties and responsibilities. So um I wanted to bring that out because uh I believe the information that we're waiting for now is uh identifying which um professional political appointees um or positions are um that you're trying to compile the list for and determining um how they were created. Um, as Sage indicated, they were uh created by statute. So I don't know how much that's going to change the policy manual because like I said, it does not apply to political appointees. So I just want to um let both of you or everyone know that here. Uh, the committee members and uh we can um touch bases and meet back with um Miss um Thompson and um possibly Miss French.
Thank you.
Um, to to some extent, I disagree with you that political appointees are elected official. It's not very clear by the personal policy manual. Because we still he still follow the PAF process the way it's written in this personal policy manual. For elected position, which is like us as delegates. And then you still do that for a political appointee. He still process of PAF, which is all laid out in this personal policy manual. So to that extent, and then there's other things that I could list um saying that we are still part of this. Uh, is this in the matter of guess at this point, since you brought it up to the fringe rate, the 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 areas, I guess. Maybe there should just be a section that has to talk about political. Um, and then there should be another section, maybe that's needed to be added just for the elected position or council delegate. But again, regardless, we still refer to this. Well, looking at myself, I still refer myself to this under the table appearances. I has been in that position for even though I'm an elected council delegate. That's how I respect this personally. And 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 so um I see your point, but we still follow we still follow that. Very interesting, though. Thank you for for bringing that up. To to minimal, I think we we as elected or political appointee still follow this personal policy manual. And it's very important also because now we're adding this on the social media, uh to this new one regarding that issue. And then now we're going also on the the young whistleblower, uh as part of that as well. Well, which is the hostile environment. Delegates, we still have to follow the sexual harassment process as well in this personal policy manual. We still sign on. I mean, I that's what I mean. I could go along, but there's a minimal thing that we still refer back to this. So um that's a again, that's across the board on board of appointee, they like it. Um, individuals, we still follow the sexual harassment process. That's a great question in policy. So I mean, I I could go on. Yeah. So um just in that, that's how I look at it.
Okay.
Thank you. This now.
Well, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for having this very interesting. It's something which statute that solves the political at will the employees or appropriate to you. Um, but not adhering to the personal policies. Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Fennelly. I didn't hear the your statement.
My inquiry was um which what statute um is is all the political appointees but not adhering to the personal policies. It's kind of like they have one foot in the door, they have one foot out the door. It's and then when the circus ends arises, it seems that they can be all too little and whichever benefits and you know, say personal policies apply to me because I'm going to get paid. Personal policies don't apply to me because I'm not I I'm I'm not um I don't have to adhere to any policies. And and I don't have to comply with the ingredients. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fennelly, for um bringing that out. And I do agree with what you're saying. And that's why I wanted to bring it out, just to get um the feel for how um everyone here is looking at the personnel policies and who it should apply to and um whether or not separate policies are needed. But I do understand, you know, where you're coming from because they're using our current internal processes to get certain things done. However, um in terms of ethical, that goes to ethics and rules, but and then there's other standards that are set up which uh everyone should comply with. Uh, because, you know, in order for uh any kind of enforcement to take place, everyone has to be at the uh applying to some type of policy or procedure. And that's where I think it's uh kind of difficult because we say that it only applies to uh the employees of the Navajo Nation. But then when it comes um to the uh political appointees or the elected officials, it um they um they have a separate set of um policies or procedures that they need to comply with. So I think that you know, I don't want to come back in, say, January and then we find something else wrong with it again. So I think that um to uh move the process through and making sure that we we're uh addressing all areas, I think that, you know, that was that's the reason why I brought it up. Because I feel like, you know, we're all equal and we should all be treated the same. Thank you.
Alright, now it's good. Any others? I guess we'll we'll see what they vote on. But that would because Candace is a good candidate. Candace is our lead vote. We have matched as well. So so we'll see how that whole letter is going out to this whole assembly. Alright, so with that, again, thank you very much. Good day and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Yeah, thank you for coming here. I I I don't know if you want to move with this back or if you want us to. So with that, thank you very much, Genshin. Uh, the first computer resource, PDM's that you can. Thank you. And so with that, uh let's move on to the next one, the PDM Department of Education. And I got it from you. That's section number zero two five nine dash two nine. That's where you do their budget, competency, the binder, um from Dodi. Or that entails, you know, all the information uh regarding the Department of Education's um budget or basically the same one that we're doing.
It's actually replicating the actual legislation and there was no way.
We will find that those are two hard copies that's here for us. So again, you remember, we are on legislations. There was two five nine dash two five, so legislation. Uh, and reviewing the legislation. And sponsor that and then different attorney, if you are administrative assistant, not that accountant, but the administrative assistant, the spiritual um here and then I don't see just George Brent uh here at ten scholarship and kind of assistant. So with that, different attending. If wanted, we're gonna have that listed on the manual. So, or yours?
Yeah, A. Good morning. Thank you, everybody, members, honorable delegates that are on the call. Everybody else joining us on the call, Claudia Edgar, Super Junior Department of Education. So we did visit last week briefly before we went to Thanksgiving break. Uh, wish everybody happy Thanksgiving festivities and coming into the new month of December. So obviously, we had a conversation last week about um an unmet need asked for the amount of three point eight million. Um, and then we had the conversation going back and forth about reallocating different funds from different areas to meet the need. Um, so I did, the only ask that we were well aware of and informed of was the one when you guys were discussing the Navajo Nation Board of Education members being reduced from a member of eleven to five and requesting that the amount of thirty seven thousand seven hundred twenty two dollars will be reallocated to a different department. Oh, Navajo Head Start for the the Nell Language Emergent Program there. So that was the only information that we had received from uh your recommendations last week. We did make that change as well. Um, if you can look at the spreadsheet given before you um reallocation as far as like any proposal, the amount will still stay the same. Um, but for like information on um Office of Education Research and Statistics, forty thousand dollars has been reallocated to Office of the Navy Chin Lee. That will be earmarked for Pinion Unified School District Program for the Pinion Community School. Uh, Pinion Community have services given out to them. So that was forty thousand that was moved there. They also um reduced the amount for Office of the NAD school improvement from sixty five thousand and ODY thirty two thousand. ODY is the main administration building here at Department of Education. Taking thirty two thousand, the total amount of ninety seven thousand reallocated to Navajo Nation Library. During the initial um budget approval that Navajo Nation Council approved prior to uh November twenty fourth, the amount they were awarded ninety five thousand three hundred dollars for the Navajo Nation Library. That was sort of the ask of a position to be uh established for that one. And then I got an email or it was informed by a library director, program manager, that they needed ninety seven thousand dollars more to be able to purchase um the the library system. Um, evidently, other resources and funding that were utilized were unavailable to them. So this is the new ask. So that's why I had to allocate ninety seven thousand dollars there for our Navajo Nation Library. Moving on to OGA, um Office of NAD Accountability Compliance. I uh reallocated seventy thousand there to Dodi Admin. Dodi Admin, the initial ask was one point seven million. Out of that one point seven million, that one point one point five was earmarked for our H tax system for the Department of Education. We know that it's been years that we've been displaced as far as no heating in this winter and no cooling in the summer. So the one point five is for that. The seventy thousand being reallocated to Dodi Admin is because every year we're charged annually for the Microsoft Office three sixty five. The certificate of maintaining this for our um accessibility to technology as far as like Word applications, Excel, different things of that level of Microsoft, our certificate or the licensee fees on about sixty thousand dollars annual. So just that this reallocation from ODA to um the the Dodi Admin is to cover the cost of our Microsoft our Microsoft um payment. Like I said, it's sixty thousand dollars that we have to pay annually for that. Moving on to Navajo Nation Board of Education, uh per your request as head committee, the thirty seven thousand seven hundred twenty two dollars has been reallocated to the Navajo Head Start Nell Language Emergent Program. Um, although we have Navajo Head Start as a forward funded federal program, we as uh the Navajo Nation Housing had in this program, we have to provide that the NAD language immersion curriculum to them. So that's what that expense will cover. So other than that, it's still the remaining amount of the ask of the unmet need is still at three point eight mil three hun- three million eight hundred seventy eight thousand one hundred eighty four dollars. Um, after our discussion and taking into considerations, um the greater need of direct services, um I've reallocated a total of two hundred forty four thousand seven hundred twenty two dollars, which was reallocated in the replacement of the same amount of two hundred forty four dollars seven hundred twenty two. Two hundred forty four thousand seven hundred twenty two dollars. So still the final budget um asked proposal is still at the amount of three million eight hundred seventy eight thousand one hundred eighty four dollars. Thank you, sir.
And it's not Pinion School District, oh, Pinion.
You're right, it's actually not Pinion Unified School District. It goes to Pinion Community for the youth apartment services out there. Uh, the reason why the forty thousand was reallocated was because we do have Office of the Navy Youth there in Chin Lee. We have a bridge out in Minifarm, but Pinion is quite a ways from um as well still within the jurisdiction or boundary of Chin Lee District. So therefore, Pinion would serve like harbor at Black Mesa and students out in that youth area as well. Thank you.
Yaffe, um committee member, honorable committee member of the Health Education Human Services Committee and also of the Navajo Nation Council. All about Yaffe to everyone listening. Um, she is doing initially and she I don't know if I initially told you, but she's the woman that she say out of the that the eight mission other. And I come from the great district fourteen. Um, I just wanted to clarify, first of all, I apologize that Dodi still does not have an accountant as that's brought up. But I'm doing um what I can. Um this binder replicates the legislation. I live strictly by the um by the legislation packet and um because of the many conversions to PDM, I could not utilize the actual legislation package that was on this because there was it wasn't clear. So that's why I maintain using um the budgets that were that we have from the hard copy so that you'll get a clearer picture of that. So this basically just replicates the legislation and is put into tabs from exhibit A through D. I just wanted to share that and thank you very much. I forward to a favorable um conclusion. Thank you, Yaffe, to each of you.
Thank you for that as well. Um, I guess today we're looking at the work sessions to be very productive. One, we had a lot of funds that um where we had no operating funds. Uh, but we're given the budget, given this given year, the prioritizing was with based on staffing, the benefits and keeping staff employed with the Department of Education. Um, we now are coming up with months and a whole months of issues of like storage payments. Uh, obviously, our youth centers, our water, electricity, um food and snacks that are provided to the students. So uh and of course, you know, we're anticipating that those numbers will increase because December, a lot of kids are not going to be outside or going to other activities because of the the weather conditions. So we anticipated in the next few months that our enrollment of the the participation units of youth apartments um to increase as well. So as you can look at the proposed budget, um all their youth apartments, they all have an average of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a piece. Uh, we could say, for example, one youth apartment, such as White Crown, maybe the utilities there, water and everything, they average about five thousand dollars a month, which averages that to about thirty thousand a year just based on utilities alone. So obviously, um an average of about a hundred and ninety is earmarked for each of the agency levels. Uh, within Navajo Nation Council's prior approval, the only awarded crown point for the amount of sixty eight thousand nine hundred dollars. And then the work fight youth department was seventy four thousand seven hundred dollars. So when you look at the ask, the ask is only at an average of about a hundred and twenty thousand or so. So but we average, if that is granted, they would all average about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars at each. So, but we average, if that is granted, they would all average about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars at each youth department. So, um, and then our direct services, we provide, we're a division that's not like no other. You know, you have, per se, uh, P D M people, there's now that you guys just had, uh, worked with earlier. Uh, they stay in their offices and they stay in their department. For us, we have direct services as far as accreditation, we have uh, school improvement, we have reorganization. And although we know that, yeah, we can probably be creative and view online and do move, we also have to pay for our Zoom subscription as well. But when we do that, people don't really understand the personal interactions we can have. Um, our staff, we go out and provide professional development to our schools as well. And like, for instance, C O B I, our C O B I Navajo Nation office, if our staff were to go, if the schools were to go straight through C O B I to provide. Professional development and prepare for accreditation, they would be paid thousands of dollars to the organization to provide that service. But through our department and through our program of C O B I, our staff is able to go out to the schools, conduct professional development and get schools prepared for their accreditation coming up. This year, for example, we have sixteen that are coming up on accreditation, there's ten reviews, this I have reviews, and there's I think two for um. Uh, reevaluation for this year as well. So these are just an ample amount of numbers that are shared with you. Um, obviously, we are one division that is one of the largest that serves the Navajo Nation. Uh, we provide a lot of direct service and hands-on training for staff, um. Not only that, but like for issues that arise as far as like personnel issues or like student safety, like scan reports. Or um, any emergency evacuation or anything of that nature that comes as reported to us, we have to investigate those as well. So, um, not only can we change compliance and accreditation, but we also look at various issues that are posed to us as well. Not only as a school level, but with administration, the students, but also with um, overseeing the school board. As well of our schools, um, serving the Navajo Nation, but uh, this is just an overview or everything, but I. Uh, just like this Mitchell had um, stated, you know, I have to say that we have a great session. And overall, getting the funding that we need so we can continue our work serving the Navajo people, Navajo education, yeah, thank you.
Take your report?
Yes, sir.
So with that, thank you, and questions, anybody? Remember? Uh, Honorable Director?
Yeah, thank you. So, I have a quick question here. Can we just restate, and we've addressed this packet, and by he has another question, by the way, I think it's just a period of the past, we all answered. Um, so regarding the O G A. The seventy thousand that's going to D O E Admin, can you just recite where it's been pulled from O G A? I know you mentioned the s- uh, the descriptions and other stuff, but can you just recite where it's from, okay? And then the same for um, O D Y, the thirty-two thousand. And then, uh, why I think was supposed to be O P S I, remember, the sixty-five thousand. And then O E R S is forty thousand. Um, if you can just recite where those are pulled exactly from. And then going to the new, my, I have to explain the new line item, the replacement. Uh, I just want to know how to better understand and where to go over. And then the other thing is. This pocket here, is this then the amendment to the legislation? Uh, because if you're going to exchange, uh, what's existed, what's existing in the legislation currently. Um, is that amendment ready to vote? And then, I don't know how well where sponsored is of some of these changes. Um, and if there was a meeting that was held prior to this work session, um, to better engage. Um, why some of these figures, the figure hasn't changed. I was under the assumption that your three point eight million requests would actually drop. Um, because. There were funds allocated for like promotional stuff, I mean. For myself, and that's, that's regarding O E R S, it's like, you know, you spend X amount of money for emotional items. And then. That I assume would be of any consideration, but it sounds like it's, it's not, because you still can't produce money. Which I'm okay with, I just need to have a better understanding of that. And then, I know last time when O D Y presented, um, there was a lot of discussion about. Uh, the utilities going off, the wires, is that the current state right now? Can you explain more a- about that, and what has D O E then done to remedy that situation? Uh, because last time I mentioned that. Here the comprehensive budget, you come to this body, you share those facts, you share what's happening. Not just once and then, and at the eleventh hour, and trying to invite delegates to sit at the table. While we're in the midst of a comprehensive budget, to me, that doesn't make logical sense. So I don't necessarily see some of the needs that are presented. Um, and that's why I look back to some of the other programs that do. Fully have to keep filter positions or other programs' operations, et cetera. Uh, but when we look here, then we, I assume myself, I assume we all agree. So, um, can you just clarify that, then what is the state of, what's happening now with O D Y, thank you, sure.
Thank you, so with that, Superintendent?
Thank you. So obviously, I'll just say for the record, um, Office of Research and Statistics, the forty thousand dollars is going to be allocated out there. Um, the reali- the reallocation is based off the initial ask. So we're asking the three point eight million. So we had a special few, um, the heads members last week, you guys said move the money to where it's more needed. So this money of the moves are not based off of the initial rented money already. We're suggesting the move of the money is based on the initial ask of the three point eight million. So we just reallocated. We just reallocated, we look at the top first half. So we have an initial ask, and one of the green is what you, um, Navajo Nation Council already approved as a comprehensive budget for twenty twenty-six. The initial ask is this unmet need for the amount of two, three point eight million. So we haven't got that, that's a short thinking, that we will get that with, uh, with all you and your sort of work. But if, once that's granted, um, I was under the understanding, we had a session last week, was not to change the numbers of the amount asked for. But to reallocate it based on where the need really is.
So my question is, you're pulling forty thousand from seventy-two thousand, seven hundred, very. Where? Where is that forty thousand coming from in the program? Because if it passes, that's how much the programs can get.
Yes.
So my question then is, I understand the figures, I understand all of that, my question though is. From O E R S, from O P S I, from O B Y, you're pulling from the initial ask, but what is that? Where are you pulling from, from the initial ask? Because this is an amendment, which requires the vote, so that's why I'm asking, where is we pulling from? Is it from, okay, forty thousand, or our initial ask was to support um, promotional items, so we're actually taking forty thousand from those pro lines, everyone actually put it. For uh, voting by Chin Lee. Sixty-five thousand from O P S I is actually pulling from. I don't know where, it's a short amount of time, you're okay with moving sixty-five thousand, but we were on the assumption we need. Then what is that amount that you're pulling from, from O P S I? That, that's all I need to.
Well.
But, but if, if not, then I don't really like that in any way, and I can answer the question, thank you, sure.
So, thank you for the question. So, but they have, for example, like, um, Office of Research and Statistics, when they're pulling forty thousand. They're gonna have to regenerate their budget to meet the thirty-two thousand, so that would, that would exempt. Like the promotional, all these different things that are being asked of. But like I said, right now, we don't have funds in there for anything. Um, that's gonna be, once we get the funds, the whole Department of Education, we should revisit their budget exactly. One, eliminating um, promotionals, um, a lot of other things that are unnecessary to pull from that. But like I said, the other thing I was understanding was that the initial amount stays the same, but we're just reality from that.
Yeah, Eddie, thank you for the question, Delegate Ness, um. For O E R S, the funds were taken out of the special transactions. Um, so that was moved, and each one that was indicated on here, the focus was. On focusing on the actual needs and like for O D S I. Right now, Dr. Clark is moving heavily on advancing the Navajo Education and First Information System. So data and computers are mainly our, our big concentration. And special transactions for youth activities, we stopped doing science fair and then. Due to the lack of funds and no money and then the state that schools are in. Um, it's very minimal on our teacher initiative that we fold and post. And so with that and also promotional items, that we focus on direct services. For handbags or different things for teachers, resources, books, and. So we cut back on all of that due to the, not the lack of need or activity, but based on our fiscal status. So those funds will move out of that for that account. And then, um, who else did we have here? And then with O D Y Youth Administration, um, Mr. Eddie Water again focused on. The promotional items and different things because each agency has an object for focusing on their promotional items and needs. So the thing was to, for administrations, since the agencies are handling that. To minimize on that, and the focus was basically addressed on needing to fulfill the needs of other. Direct service programs. Um, and then, of course, the Board of Education was discussed here on the decrease of membership. And then to focus on figuring, figuring out how to fill the need, the deficiency. Within the Chin Lee Agency for Pinion, and that was where the forty thousand was placed, or thirty-seven thousand. Seven two-two was placed um, from the Board of Education, so. Actually, I guess it was used to focus on the no need for um, promotional and catering. All catering was also um, tied in um, during the last meeting. And special items like that, and I just noticed too that there's wine items for uniforms. Um, that's something else that should have been considered, but um. I, I hope that answers some questions, thank you.
And just clarifying, like I said, the initial understanding was today was going to be work session. Obviously, you guys asked and talked and gave us a directive about the thirty-seven thousand. Then you said go ahead and reallocate or remove stuff in that suggestion. So that's why I said, we can't tell you exactly where it's coming from until we understand what you all want, so we can go back to our programs. And I can sit with them elbow to elbow, we can cross out these things and make adjustments as necessary. Like I said, we can't sit here and plan on a three point eight million, and you guys come down and say, we're only getting two point four million. So that's why I'm like, this is the work session that we're understanding what we both want, what we both need. Um, as far as like O D Y, they are paid up till the end of this month, December, um, December payments are coming up as well. So, um, as far as keeping their doors open and snacks and foods of that, then needing um. Uh, provided to the, but like I said, you know, like this is doable, as far as, like I said, I do understand the needs of where we're at. When I did um, the, the information on per se, our O B Y, or the reason why I do like cuts to from those areas, like O S U's. Our Office's um, uh, research, they only have three employees in there. And then O G A currently, they only have two employees in there, so a lot of the cuts were based on where the needs were. Um, as far as uh, what there are, what was currently available in place right now. So that's why the cuts were made in that area, but a big uh, plus was the ninety-seven thousand for our library, and that's for the system for the um. Their registering, their barcode data system for ninety-seven thousand, that's a one payment, and it should last for about five years or so, so. Um, and then like again, like I said, I just remember that ninety-seven thousand last week, um, Tuesday or Wednesday. Um, because their funding that was initially put through for that, that fell through, so that was in our vision that it would be made, so.
Uh, thank you, um, so. I guess at this point in time, it's hard to say how much dollars we will be providing. That's, that's the big issue at this point. Because one, is we already know. The programs are gonna have to get useless. They're gonna, they're gonna have to get used to doing the budget better. They're gonna have to somehow do away, do away with catering, the promotional item, all of that has to go away at some point. Because the nation is not generating revenue. We're gonna, the programs need to understand that. This is going to be our consequences next year or in two years. And so start practicing. And, and so we need to start. We, we can't sit here and say, we're gonna give you ten thousand dollars for catering. And the next part that really comes up, that the program unit is, I'm going to end, is that. Budget and finance has the, the system going on your expenditures. And that's, I'm trying to get a hold of you, Eddie, to show you guys. That hardly any spending is done the first quarter of the fiscal year. Hardly any spending is done the second quarter, meaning January, February, and March. All of a sudden, during the third quarter of the whole fiscal year, people start moving. And start spending the rent, starts utilizing the funding that was allocated to them. Then fourth quarter, of course, to end up with fiscal year, it really jumps up. The spending, expenditure, all of that happens. Where's there, everybody's like, right now, all we have to spend is, we're not gonna get this money again, it's gonna show. So, the controller and budget and finance has this system going by quarters. Regarding your expenditure of how we sell in. And right now, we are at the top end of already ending first quarter. And we haven't given you a budget. But you're asking for dollar amounts here. Like you're gonna start operating with this dollar amount to gain like over first. So it's your, your dollar amount for the promotional, I, all these other nonsense stuff that. Doesn't need to keep the program alive or keep going, is still in your budget. So that's, and then to get to, uh, Honorable Director Ness, what he's asking is that, alright. The original, the original legislation is already out there. And so. Based on that, if there's five day, the five day comp here, people are already making that. So the original, the original one is out there. So when you start doing um, this portion here. This portion here, we need to change all that information from the original. Legislation that is currently out, which you know, messy cable, but it still moves forward. So. What I see in this one, when the comparison to, to the original one, I'm just going to bring up, um. Uh, O S U's Office of Educational Resources Statistics, so. It's, it's different. So this budget form is different from your original one. Some of your dollars have gone down, some of them, you just moved it to the other one, or in this case, you added building in space. And it looks like you took some of that lodging and um, meals to the building in space. But the original says otherwise, and the original doesn't have building space. So, again, that's gonna be looked at, plus your guys' spending rate by the five fiscal year. How much dollar did you actually spend in the first quarter? And then it's gonna get complicated, that budget and finance again, when they start saying, alright, well, first quarter. You didn't spend hardly any last fiscal year. And right now, we're already done with first quarter. So. In that case, these dollar amounts should be going down. And, but then again, it makes it harder, hard on us again, on the original one, because we have to put new. Budget forms in there, and that's for number five, you know. So that's where Honorable Director Ness asked, and you have that information, the board is in the packet. And then once all the changes that you guys have detailed out, that information needs to go to our regional council. To start making that amendment draft, so when we go to the budget and finance, we're gonna say, alright, you're gonna have to pull this one out. You're gonna have to put this new amendment in it. That's gonna be probably the first step that we're gonna do, and then from there, there. That's going to be probably the first step that we're going to do. And then from there, they're going to probably look at it and say, alright, this is a thirty dollar amount, this is how we're moving forward. Um, if they approve that amendments. So that's what I'm looking at, like, then uh trying to ask them like, okay, so where did you take this money from? Which object code did you take money from? From the original. So that's that's where it gets really complicated and so tedious. Um, and the next question is, alright, so you from from OSHR, you reallocated forty thousand. To unassuming ODY Chinley. So what what money did you take from OSHR? Which what object code did you get rid of? That's if detailed budget line item, what did you get rid of? To give to Chinley ODY. To to make them live on and move on that program moving forward. But does, I mean, if the question is, did you take money from OSHR? Let's say OSHR wanted to. I don't know, they want to 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 buy binders to live on. Did you take money from from what they need to live on, which is the binder? Did you take that money from OSHR's and give it to? Chinley ODY and now Chinley ODY has more promotional items or more in catering. Or more in supplies? So that's where the time she's trying to figure out where for that difference is. But then again, over here, OSHR needed to live on the the binders. Chinley ODY over here can still move forward. Without being funded in promotional items or catering or any of those. Those stuff that we discussed. Really enjoy. But then, so there's that, and then you have budget and finance over here that they have a system going on your expenditure rate by quarters. And then, so I'm trying to get um, um, the case to probably share that information with us and. That way you have an idea where we're where we're headed with this and to have the idea of what budget finance is going to bring up as well. And that's how they did the last budget this year. But but at the end of the day, well, we we have to tell our programs, you know, this is what we're going to be spending. Next year or two years. So there's there's about a big difference like. Of course, now we'll head start event for one week in there for emerging language. So that's that's something that will keep the programs alive compared to other items. Airfares or mileage or P O B, all of them suddenly, alright, so you can't travel. So that's where you have to really detail it up. That's where the team helps. So Ada Young just wanted to mention that, um, so or maybe the board to respond again to her panel.
Yeah, I just need a clarification. So, well, one, um, I guess, like I said. Work session, you guys give us feedback of what needs to be fixed. Like I said, this is just a proposal, maybe you guys want more money somewhere else. Two, are we able, since the legislation has already dropped the five day commentary, it has to pass. My understanding was the amount of three point eight had stayed there. Am I understanding that correctly?
Um, on the doctor's names?
So so ED delegate can propose it and I I could. If I have the support at your council, I could even bring it down to one dollar. That's just hypothetically, I won't do that, but the amount can any amount change. So whether um, the amount here is three point eight. But then budget finance might, oh, and they have the support from their committee, so when I have it constantly. What we have in front of us may be three million or two point five million. But what we as a committee here, what we're, what we suggested last time was to um, we could be, again, I was under the interpretation here that. We 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 could be under the circumstances that we were reducing. An amendment that worked for the committee, whether a an office needed promotional items. So I don't know if you convene your program managers and if you have, when when we went over the last meeting, of course, sent the document of the suggestion. Did you meet with the program managers to say, hey, this is, you know, what we are producing? Um, because I I have lots of people who are being uh entertaining this, which brought to my attention. Wait, we don't have X amount in promotional items. And I'm like. Yeah, I do in the legislation. Then I thought, okay, well then, this is your program in your office. How do you not know it's actually being proposed here? So, um, and that's why I'm asking like if, how involved or if you've involved program managers on their existing budget. And then my additional follow up is regarding what Chair mentioned earlier, that budget finance committee. Through this comprehensive budget cycle had like a formula and it's kind of, it it's. To the point where it's basically allowing programs that, one, they did have some existing funds, both personnel. And so I don't know from. From the time to comprehensive budget, whether or not they did that forward to current December first, if we're too much in. I don't know if you've utilized that personnel bucket for anything and if you have, then just share with the committee what it's going to use for. Um, because I know. Generate for every program that they had existing funds for those reasons. Uh, because we certainly did a lot of the existing positions to be um, where you look. Uh, thank you, Chair.
Secretary of General?
Yeah, so that's uh that's good to know, because like I said. My understanding was we stay with the same amount and that was their strong story for you guys to do the amendment on your part. That's why I made this as a suggestion, a recommendation of where the new placement will be. And I'm like, if you want to go and reduce it, that's fine. If I knew that we can go ahead and change the amount, amend it and give the amendment proposal to you all, is that what they're asking? The amendment proposal, we can go back and clear that up. Obviously, um. Program managers do have the first initial um paper that they submitted as their own budget. And obviously, you see catering, you see move, you see promotion, so this fat around. I don't have a problem going back through myself and redlining everything out and rebuilding. And making that asset that three point eight million, minimizing it down to get uh where we need the money um necessary for each program. That I don't have a problem with. Um, second of all, uh, you know, we look at the formula. It's really hard for me to understand the formula based on data. Uh, for example, our Office of Special Patient Rehabilitation Services, they are only giving a hundred dollars for funding. We also have, for instance, um, the other area of like Head Start immersion, that was thirty five hundred dollars. That was initially granted by the National Mission Council during the comprehensive budget. So it's like, um, the OSHR's, that one is a position, that position has been vacant. There was nothing else. That's only one person's position to keep that food bedding program open there at DOBE. For many years, it was open and in business for the past couple of years, it's been out and nobody has applied for that position. So I I understand Mr. McCain might have his formula and everything, but like I said. How can something that has never been filled for the past three or four years get a hundred dollars? While all the other places in the department program have been operating with direct services and still getting nothing? So, um, which makes me question their data on their informed data decision making based on our formula. So, but like I said, I don't have a problem going back through here. This obviously is a work session. You can give me your two cents of what you guys see, what you want. Obviously, I do agree there should be no promotions. Promotional items, I agree, there should be no food, that would be great. Um, uh, and just having direct services given to where it's needed. Like I said, these are um easy fix and that can be done. Um, and then if you want us to get the proposed. Uh, amendments to one of you or to you as a as the head committee, that's where we can do that too. But like I said, um, these amounts of the initial ask were given by the program managers themselves. At no point did I go in and say, no, 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 because, you know, like I said. One, it's too time consuming because I have a million other things to do, intend to um address. So each of the programs provided their own budget. And since the beginning of the budget season, we've been sitting at each one, wait for somebody to call us, we go to the ENF, we go to all these steps. And each one, they're like, oh, we're just going to pass it through. Oh, we'll do the next one. Nobody for like. You know, we show up council floor, we show up at ENF and nobody has sat. I'm just like, okay, that helps what your needs are. Everybody just passes it through. So it's not like anything is new. This is what we've been proposing since September, October, we've been talking about since the budget season has started. So, but other than that, thank you.
Yeah, the Ada, um, honorable delegates and all those. I go legislative staff that are here, um. I think, well, I have a I have a better understanding of what is needed now and when um Chairman James referred to. A report, I was thinking you could probably use what O B released during the council session, which is the O B report. Which shows all the expenditure rates and I agree with you on that. At all of them, we should have been at fifteen to five percent. But um they're very substantial and a result of that, with our programs is. Um, the late expenditures in the fourth quarter led to um purchases that were made. And then when they were submitted to OOC for payment, um. They had a large batch of work to do too. And a lot of them did not, were not eligible or met the internal timeline down there. And I guess what happens, it reverts to utilizing the next fiscal year funds. Which with no operation, some programs, some business units were left with, um, I can't even think. Um, they were in the red by those large amounts. Because the purchase was late and then the the receiving was submitted late, which resulted in that object code being in the red. Um, so this is a good eye opener for everyone on the need to extend quarterly. And I think in the work session that um this Edgewater has with the managers. It should be reflective of um the second quarter on, not the first quarter, as Chair James had indicated. And I think that was it. And um, this Edgewater really put this together to um get an idea and. It's not actually but to get your input on whether it was going in the right direction and also to maintain. The amount that went through the legislative process and was approved by the legislative council and O C and O B. So, um, now that we have instructions, um, I think, um. Thank you for that, but I just wanted to share that, especially on that O B report on the. At council, on FY twenty five or all the business units, the fifteen that are already created here on their expenditure rates. So thank you.
Another thing what last time is I'm considering thinking about um, thinking going through the amendment needs and going through this process. But I've listened in and I've seen a couple of other times that I haven't seen outside entities or other programs come over. For example, like, you know, J L M asked me for two million. Would it be just easier if I just come in as DOBE admin and say, I want three point eight million and then we'll have to worry about all of this? Because you guys are giving out millions of dollars like it's candy. And I I'm speaking, is it easier for me to say, hey, DOBE admin, we need three point eight million? Then you give it to us and then we can disperse it and utilize it at that part, if that's easier. Um, but like I said, you know, I I've seen and witnessed a lot of money going through the nation, millions of dollars given. To funds that are already funded, that are already running, but that don't really give us direct services to. You know, we serve seventy three thousand students and that's not including community members, our education. We allocate at the federal and local level as well. Um, for example, we have ODAT who goes out to a school. Who pays their money out of their own gas and their own pocket to save the school for drawing down three point eight million. So we're saving millions of dollars when it comes to education for Nataho. So I'm thinking, you know, I thought this was the proper way to go by asking for the budget, because people say, go this way, go this way. But, you know, like I said, it's a demand need and if we don't need this, we actually, you know, we should just be asked for our three point eight million dollars. And we more grants if we can disperse it among the programs that are needed. But I do agree that we do need to buckle down and be more disciplined and responsible. As far as how we spend the money and how the program managers and the programs are ready for DOBE, I do agree about that. Um, another thing is that, um, you guys have had a system for a couple of years and, uh, I guess. Just getting one, thank you to Julia, her expertise as a financial expert for DOBE. Um, we're just trying to get systems running, but like I said, you're our oversight. If there's an easier, better way to go about this, we are more than welcome to do it. Because like I said at the beginning, we have our doors of ODY that are at me. We have our vehicles that are already grounded. We even call fleet management and say, hey, you want us to drive all these vehicles back to the place, parking at your shop, because we don't have money to run it. Either vandalized or damaged or in any way on our parking lot, our vehicles will be responsible for it. So there's a lot of different domino effects that are in place, so. But like I said, I, you know, if it's easier just to ask for DOBE, for DOBE to just ask for three point eight million and not have to go through all of this. Um, it's not like it's not impossible too, because like I said, there's been actions that have been given out, two millions, three million, four million. And those probably has this type of budget tied to the legislation as well, so. Get a better, easier way. Um, like I said, the priority is just looking out for our department. As far as students and services that we provide, most importantly, our user program. Thank you.
Uh, again, thank you, um, to your question. I mean, we we need sixteen votes out of the full council, because this is the two thirds legislation. And so the last discussion we had, this is this our one time shot. We either do it right or we don't do it right. And and right now, the way we're going at it and you provided this. Um, it already requires nine amendments to the original legislation. Based on your covered goals here. So that's already nine amendments. And then if you go back and start. Taking other stuff. Like your emotionalized gift award or catering refreshments. Training registration, you start taking those out from. Each of the departments, that's going to add on to what I'm doing, so the nine already. And so. That's that's a decision that you guys have to make. Because you are the only one and the department managers are the only ones that know how they spend on. And then so that's that's the way of on on you guys. But what what I'm saying is that, you know. What should be in here is like your properties, like you have insurance that you have to sprout up. That's that's a priority to keep the program going. So. Again, I'm just on OSHR's, but. Right now, the way OSHR's budget form four is you have apples and oranges mixed together. As apple being a priority. And then orange not being a priority. Which would be your gift awards, your catering, are are you going to complete that? Because the way I see it is that if this goes through the process. And it goes all the way to council. You won't see entire winter session. Which is the end of January. So by that time, we're already. Oh, I'm almost halfway through the second quarter again. So from from that time, the legislation is approved. Are you going to spend the whole ten thousand dollars on catering? And then when O and B does their expenditure rate reporting to us this coming fiscal year again, it's going to show that. You just spent so much in third and fourth quarter. Why didn't you spend so much in first quarter and second quarter? So that's how the the whole reading is. But then again. You had a question, is it best that I just put all of this dollar under DOBE admin? That's that's a decision you make. Because you have oversight of your program managers and you need to tell them, hey, this is what we need to do. Either that or I can put you all under DOBE. If you have the staff to do the counter work, to to do the paperwork. Right now, you can't even hire a nap. For how long? So i- it tells those staff again that you would need to have those conditions. Um, so that's something to you, but if you want to do that. The best route will be to withdraw this legislation and then start a new legislation. That that would be the the option that I would give to you as your sponsor. And and so just withdraw this one and then just do a new one. Meaning that you're going to have probably several budget form four. Because you're going to have to decal everything under your object or under DOBE admin. And then line them out, but you'll end up maybe with ten or twelve pages. Of your budget form four. And then from there, once you get the money, the program will have to come on you.
Yeah.
And that's where you would have to expedite it for them and that's where I come in saying you would have the staff to accord you that DOBE. So that's that's another whole scenario that we have to think about. This uh FYI, I'll go to Vice Chair and then I'll work up on to the other move.
Okay. Thank you, um, thank you. Again, you know, we're entertaining a budget. It's a long, really long process, but um. So I I just want to so point out on like the O S H R S and how you on this um form of your review when you gave us and how you uh set forward and forward your um I guess if one, so there gave you options, so certainly you could just give one or one for three point eight and other. See how that works, but um if you're going to go this route where you're, you know, taking more look at every all of your compartments and moving money from there to somewhere else. I'm just going to say like, for example, one of your budget form ones um. Here you have forty thousand and I don't know, I might be doing the math wrong, but um when I see where you made the changes and you may move them, so for example, looking at the original to the new budget, say you can like maybe three thousand, you have a sense. Your original was fifteen percent a month and then you uh you reduce it to twelve. Well, certainly there's a change and that change dollar amount there is three, three seven one. And then we uh supplies is the other area that I see reduced, we went from fourteen one to ten eight. And that dollar amount was three, two six nine. And then the other change you made is some seven thousand, but the connection and you went from twenty or thirty five zero five eight to two thousand zero five eight. And that total now is thirty three thousand. So when I add that up, that's thirty nine six of forty. So if you're going to make these changes, budget and finance, I know it was going to screw my staff and say, wait a minute, where's the other four hundred? I just I can hear that. Um so there has to be, it has to be that dollar amount, that's what you're going to do. So then the dollar amount this time for me forty thousand is going to be thirty nine six forty is what it'll be. Um so if that's the route that you want to go, um certainly, I think we it it is upon, it is, it is um. If if we're proposing like for me, I take responsibility for, you know, wanting you to amend the the chimney agency so you can get out to the Inyan and serve, you know, to a more rural community. Um so certainly, that's an amendment that I um I should make at Hess. So here I have full authority to make that amendment and I should be ready to make those amendments. And I, you know, I you and I communicated and I've asked, okay, hit the budget forms ready, get all of those things ready. So we can make that amendment here. But also, you know, if they're not ready, that's what Hess is for, is then we get everybody to get those forms ready. Which I've seen in budget and finance last week, they did two hour reset to get the ones ready for the amendments. Uh for um, I don't remember which program it was, maybe um um anyway, one of the programs they were they were uh making changes for. So they took the time, which we, that that's what we should do at Hess, that's the work that we should do with Hess. Um so several times they recessed to get forms going. And you know, the issue of them was O O B was not here, which is really important because if we're asking O O B to be here, they should be sitting here, sitting at a table with their printers and their computers ready to turn documents out. But this in this case, it was like they were listening online, they were half hearing stuff. It was being repeated and it was like trying to clarify what was needed and expect what turned in and then took them away. It was it was a process. Certainly, it is. I I don't think it's an easy one. Um but if everyone is here and willing to work together, then it might be a little bit easier. Um but in this case, it was a lot of back and forth and I saw that because I was sitting here. Um so if if we, you know, and then the other thing that I just want to say about promotions and food is um, you know, some I I think about that and I think about food situation and I think um you know, I remember um uh White House, the office of of our our Washington office um has food there all the time. It's nice um because a lot of the times when we get there as delegates, we're hungry and we're looking for something to eat. And um because we're busy being hurried around from one building to the next, that it's nice to get to the um Washington office because then there's food and you you know, take time to replenish with whatever snacks they have there. Um and then the last time I went, they had no money, so there was no food and I was really sad. Um but but I'm just saying is it goes back to just, you know, the next um so you know, those things, I understand that, you know, that some things you all have meetings. Um and I I think there's, you know, not all the time. Um there's times certainly you maybe you have a staff meeting and you say, let's have a potluck and you know, the kindness of everyone's heart, they drink something, that's also nice to get catered to. And 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 so the other thing is just um, you know, your your promotion items. So if we're going to make it a policy or we're going, we're going to express to our programs that you need to do way with um promotions that really just needs to be all addressed and worked even that will be sure. Nobody should be getting promotional items. Um several years back, maybe ten, twelve years ago, um my then delegate, the white leather swoon, you know, for the community said, no, I have promotional items and he tried. It was not, nobody was happy with that. He was way ahead of his time. But anyway, they're still around. Um and and you see it very much, you know, like delegate um and Inez hears us at the parade dress. Uh oh keep on O B team uh be calm that. So you know, and and then I have um, you know, just last week, my other brother was watching uh she shouldn't be job sit down. Um anyway, he said promotional items in the post combo on the on the table. You know, so he's talking about affairs and things. And he said, so he was saying, you know, that that they, there's a lot of people that don't find me at some of these events. Um and so therefore they don't get to receiving these promotional items and so he was saying that we'll get lots of prize water so we can, because those are the very great, the most probably the best promotional items you could get. Um so any case, having said that, I'm, you know, just want to say uh again, there is a fine line because this is you as a program leader and your, you know, the people who are going to you, this really is you guys saying this is how this is what the work that we were doing and this is how much it costs. You're doing the work. Um and so where is that fine line is where I then am demanding of you to take certain things out, you know, because I'm not in your position. But also, I think the only reason, the only little bit of authority or thing that we can go off of on is expenditure rates. That's the only thing that we we look at and see and say, are you really extending to ninety yes or no? Um and so uh that again, that's, you know, that's something that you have to defend. Um and and if there's, you know, if there is a huge amount that just comes back, certainly, that's really where budget and finance is looking at. Those those two things and they say in their BIM, we're really, really looking at uh your expenditures. Are you extending to ninety? If you're not, then don't be asking for the full amount. If we give you a hundred last year and you know, we spent sixty, then we're inclined, we're just giving you the sixty, you know, um based on what you, you know, how we've done this before. That's what I've seen them do. Um I don't think they go so much into the weeds in terms of um take out your promotions or take out your, I don't think I've seen them do that. Um so if if they do do that, then they are adding on to this process, the BIM process. But nowhere in there says that. I've read this a couple of times now. Um and and so I guess um, you know, just saying that uh somewhere in the near future, uh you're looking at a reduction um. You know, that that seems to be the case at this point is one. Um but also uh, you know, uh the other thing that I've heard one of my colleagues say is a lot of these programs like yours, for example, the O B Y, I guess in the city where you have Boys and Girls Club and Y M Cs or whatever those youth organizations are called, they have the ability to charge for membership. So they have the ability to collect money from the students utilizing those facilities. But um here we are and and it's great that we are offering these services for free, free of charge. And I think that, you know, those of our Navajo people that are listening out there, you know, like, you know, these things, um although they're free to you, uh somebody is paying for it. And so, you know, you know, understand that and that's a good thing that we get to do. And somebody said even veterans, you know, the benefit, whatever benefits that we provide, we are the only nation now in the nation in this country that actually, you know, also provides some benefits to as veterans. Uh whereas other folks just, you know, they say federal is going to take care of you because that's who is under what we've been able to do with too here. So I think about that um with our youth program and I appreciate that um that you're able to provide those services to our youth. And do we really, you know, that's in terms of sustainability, um unless you're looking for maybe additional grants, which I don't know if you have the um if you're able to do that. And then of course, you probably have set yourself up in a way, but I know in the past, like O D J J P used to offer you know, grants for adverse view kind of things and so I don't know if you're eligible or any of those things, but the only other way you are going to um um I guess, sustain the program is through some grants if you're not going to charge the kids. Because that would also just be the only other way. And are we really able to do that, you know, um able to charge a membership to these sort of kids? Um because it does cost me um the thing, rising of having lights on a building. And that's why my programs come and they say we want to build this gigantic multi-purpose center and give off already into the lights on. Because that is the big question in the debate and nobody really thinks to want to answer that. But any case, I just want to say um uh when it gets to budget and finance, I I I don't know, Chair, how you going to proceed, but we're going to continue to make these amendments. I guess one, you have all these amendments ready. And then we would just have to, uh I think it's a matter of working with, if we're going to do that budget and finance, that's a matter of working with committee members to introduce the amendments. Or you just take it as is, have a budget and finance, do what they need to do and then when it is to NAVI, then we have the ability from the floor to make those amendments. So for my, in our work opinion, that's where I would offer that amendment. That would be a a problem need to do it. I don't know if, you know, um I know um Dr. Enz was um mentioned the the knowledge which immersion and giving them more money. So maybe he does that for their, you know, which is just, it might be all up to, you know, I don't know, different people to offer those amendments and then of course you have the rest of the delegates to. They may or may not have an amendment depending on whether they really read the legislation and, you know, and if any of them are really willing to vote at that or maybe their region, you know, in terms of O U Y, so um I think either way could work. Uh I would just, you know, um if and um, you know, the amendments aren't ready, then maybe we you just go ahead and so go through with this, uh whatever you have originally. But that would because of having the amendments, it would just go like that budget and finance and see what they do with it. And so it gets to NAVI then I I can offer, you know, my money, at least I I'm um saying that I want to offer the one amendment. So I mean, that that's just, I think where it looks like at this point. That's all.
Well, again, thank you, I'll write chair for that. This legislation has already passed, I see. But our our committee rule moves on, we let committee rule. So we go later like this. Budget planning, do what it is going to be. That's where we're at. But we already mentioned the two hour debate last week, so we're going to have to go through all the amendments and switching that form, so it's going to be up to me on how they deal with it as well. So we're going to make that amendment, um vice chair, we have another E A. That's why you can move forward. So that's that's all I can do. This part, but it has passed, so that's that's what we're expecting. Um. Um, no, about Chinese.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So on this legislation, two five nine dash two five. So that here in front of the big name statements. Let me hold on to our program divisions and I just didn't see if it comes up or it comes down. Are you an E B B A O this summer? Because assuming it'd be budget form for every um. We're done back then. So we go based on this uh this fine year here. Um the primary of the education and registration, what in two five nine dash two five has got me proposed, correct? You said about it?
Yes, yes, sir.
O E R S. Mr. James text about here, comes down. Oscar, I don't see a open uh Dr. Yellowhead, which you assigned, okay, comes down. Uh now we should wider study. When we're on to language emerging test, start Dr. Will. No? Uh teacher education, I've seen this ground here, we got side uh. Would you push them up there? My question is legislation two five nine dash two five includes O E S I's budget. Did you prepare our way to that budget? Figures.
The original.
By original, are you referring to two five nine dash two five? That's the legislation we're discussing. Yes?
No, it's the original.
Okay, I don't know what can be my original. My reference is what we're ready to pass by law.
For operational.
Uh Smith Nelson, all of those O U Y, no? Pardia, that's fellow experience.
Yes, well, it's um Dr. Begay.
Okay. Um banking, to my understanding, that hundred dollars is technically a regular rate because you like O S H R S does a examination and you're like that, that's when you're soon enough. And then O D A, I know J V was assigned as that acting or was over senior acting. O D A.
It's between me and uh Rose. But I I was impressed.
Okay. So so that concerns me because again, you know, it brought to my attention that what we see in two five nine dash twenty five wasn't reflective of what is actually being discussed here by law, what was assumed to pass. So that concerns me because the majority of Europeans who are currently president here didn't propose this budget that we have in legislation two five nine dash two five. And that goes back to my question earlier about the P E M's involved here, about producing a legislation that made sense to to us. And early there, there was a comment about we just give out money even though for federally funded. And I stated for the record, we didn't, and that's probably at me, it wasn't stated here, but yes, I did support the Johnson program. And Miss Edgewater indicated that there are more uh valuable fund that should be supporting. So if you can explain to me how schools or subcontractors of nearly thirty saw a reduction in about four million dollars. How is that not a private equivalent of education? That that's certainly my follow up to your statement earlier. And we don't just give out money. Whether you went for a simple three point eight with administration, we're still going to ask you where that money is going. So this is actually the right way to do it. Other programs that we've done in the comprehensive budget, they've they've done all this. Providers that we have, I took my took up in an office because that's all the credit forms that are required. So even though you went a different route in in request, it's just that I'm going to get one or three point eight, we're still going to ask you where it's from. So So. The reason I'm asking, I I'm okay, I just need to understand. Where the priorities are. I'm not saying reduce it. I'm not saying increase it. I'm just trying to get a better understanding. And I do this every comprehensive budget. When I ask questions about where certain funding are going. And by the time we get to Navi or council. Me as one delegate, there are times where I pulled from programs before. And last time I mentioned I pulled from government development before. I pulled from O P B B before. Because I just don't see it. And whatever happens, my colleagues are not just really up to that. I'm gonna propose it and then see where it goes from there. So that's why I'm asking, um. If these are just the proposed modifications in the amendment. Something to also consider is even though it has tabled, we can vote to take it off the table here. Do your amendment all as one, my recommendation, not not just heard P D R's and anyone. Just do it all as one.
Right.
But that all as one amendment. But that's what I'm trying to understand here. Whether that's still three point eight, three point eight, fine. Then we move it on, goes to B N F. Just because B N F is gonna have more questions as well. And then you get to a point where school number key got hit, uh whole. Well, I don't say all council members. I think it's very, very little all present, but. It goes in some signals, but full not key gets forward in council. That that's everybody.
Yeah.
And anybody can propose it and imagine. Somebody being, somebody else that's not on this committee, they not even see your age stock as a priority in hopes that. We would vote against it. Maybe we see it as a priority. But if they get more, that's automatically part of it. But again, you have sixteen votes. And when we were just giving out money, that also lead sixteen votes. So. That that that's just what I'm trying to to understand here. And that's why I thought we were entertaining. Um. The legislation for one and then just those amendments, which which I'm okay with. That's all I was questioning there. And then I'll again, I'll see your ups from you, not the agent of the sponsor, how you might move this forward. Uh but I just wanted to make some of those clarifications, get the insight from our PMs who are also here. And then just follow up with that question regarding the four million other um. Shortfall that uh we ask our students directly in future.
Again, thank you, Ramon, Dr. Nace. Um I I don't know how to look for this legislation. With most of the program managers said that they weren't involved. I I don't know. We're all working with each other, uh Dodi. To me, right now, it seems that way. That as program managers, you guys are working against yourself, but I think that that's what I see at Navi. Um this fine, fine line just within the past two minutes. So. I've seen some of you guys respond to know how it's involved in the budget. But. Your signature is on budget form one and this is original legislation. All of you. That's a slide that said. You aren't part of it. Your signature is not your budget form one. So you guys either stop or just not move forth with this legislation. It's up to you guys as as Dodi. And I'm sitting looking at you guys and I'm like, really seriously? All seriously. The original legislation, go back and look at it. Look at your signature. If it's not your signature, it's your signature, please tell me. But it's on your budget form one. So how do you say you're not part of it? That's the problem that we're looking at. The nonsense attitude. Just right now, you showed it when we're meeting. You either are here for the money or you're here for the children. To do your job. Very sad to see. Very sad. But I'll leave it up to Supreme Canyon. You want him to withdraw, then I can withdraw. Because this is not the right way to move forward. Being lied to is is this, this is really awful. But your your signature is all on the budget form one. In the original legislation. We either for a difference aside and come back together. That's among you guys, so. You have to fix that yourself. I can't help you or the community can't help you there. So if um you can inform me, Superintendent, how you want me to move forward with this this legislation? The majority of your program manager has said no to, well, Dr. Man's question, but. We may feel on, we might be going on, I'm not reaching on that legislation. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Thank you for the follow up and thank you for the question and clarification. So first off with J O M, I appreciate you dropping the other position for that and that we gave funding. That is for thirty six thousand students, but that is public school. Um that J O M is not reach our tribal control grad school, so it doesn't benefit any of our other schools. It only goes to public schools. Well, not location, but they don't give any of the funds. They can be private all kinds of. Yeah, but they, so I, the only um was that received by J O M is like regular. I've had other schools that have asked why don't we get tribal controlled grad schools get that J O M fund as well? So that's why. So when we look at um obviously with the intent of addressing thirty six thousand students, I have to look at developing seventy three thousand students. Which within that also public school benefit from through our advocacy, working with heads and helping with council, working with. Um the tribal leaders to make that happen, but they can do that. Yeah, because I I have had questions about that, like how come you're asking for J O M funds and we don't get it too? So I was put between the rock and the hard spot myself and I'm like, well, you know, a program manager, but this and this and that's how it got done. So I'm sorry, but I'll look into it and I will try to advocate for J O M's for a tribal control grad school as well. I just got off the call like ten weeks ago at the V I E level looking as to posing that question as well for J O M funds for our tribal control grad schools. Um because public schools are a little bit better placed because they have a higher enrollment. So they get, I said, they get um impact aid and now J O M, but our temporarily controlled brands will have low enrollment. So they don't have a significant amount of money so that a public school wouldn't. And then um thank you for that clarification. Follow up question too, I have to sit here thinking, wow, thank. But I would like, you know, like I said, if there's anything to secret, I wouldn't ask all these people to be here. So they all know that this conversation is here. Um and once again, if you submit your budget to Julia, um please raise your hand. Staff behind me, Dodi, did you submit your budget to Julia? Please raise your hand. Okay, thank you for that. Those of you who I've ever met with anyone saying, no, you can't get this or review your budget, please raise your hand. So. I guess when we look at this, there's not one, the only person I ever sent a note to and to refix it was library. And that's with as a Wednesday, right, Mr. Pete? He was asking for a night that's an amount. I said, you already given that. Then he said, I have this other amount that I need to pay for a subscription for five years, right, Mr. Pete? So that's what ninety seven thousand uh dollars worth. And I'm glad this happened because now we know the operations are going. I'm not geared in expensive adults. Our work in my leadership with the team that we have is moving forward for education for Navajo. But I'm glad it's evident that we know the boundaries that are here and I don't mind addressing these issues. But like I said, this is, this is kind of just kind of stuff here. My thought and my actions for the well-being of education for students, for the Chiniva. For students, for the communities and the board and people that we serve a purpose for. I'm not inclined to any of the nonsense and you feel any things that have appeared at this level, whether it be as personally served or. A banana or a chip on your shoulder. I have to in this position, look at the well-being of education that moves forward. But I'm glad it's evident that you see what's happening in the house up here. So we move forward with different issues and make shifts, you know, but. What's coming forward to make education at a better level. So I'm glad that happened. The next thing is that I do um like what Dr. Nace had recommended. I think at this point, we would make the amendments, we move forward for what we need. I don't have a problem sitting here and burning the night, that's oils, sitting shoulder to shoulder with Julia and putting back in red light and cleaning and all of my stuff. We gave every program the opportunity. There's not one thing in here I revised myself. I didn't let somebody say here is a direct assignment. Everybody's signature is on there. So everybody has ownership of what is here, what is proposed. This next time around, when we get done here, I'm gonna go back and I'll sit with Julia and I'm gonna redline everything. I do agree that there's like emotions in the food. I was quite shocked because I came from a state entity coming here and I'm like, wow, we can buy food, we can buy this, wow, we can buy emotional items. And to me, that was like, wow, that must be really nice. But you can even look like in our coffee on the budget, we spent our money, but it was more so directed towards um. Direct services. And then I know we keep mentioning going back to B N F is um, be uh I'm sorry, um not B N F, but um. Yeah, business of finance is um um their formula. But you know, this coming fiscal year for comprehensive budget two thousand twenty six, we're gonna be in the same place again. Not only because of committed funds, but because we have first quarter, second quarter, no spending again. So we shouldn't be relying on your on our stuff because coming this the temper again, they're gonna be like, no, we can't spend any money. You know, first quarter, second quarter, because we can get funded till third quarter. So we're gonna feedback for it is in the same place again here. But like I said, I'm I'm not really worried about that. I just wanted to keep the doors open. Um as far as our youth department, getting our direct services back where they should be. Um like I said, I don't mind. You're great recommendation by Dr. Nace, be able to amend all this, clean it up. Give it to you guys all and get this moved forward. Um because I think this is a detrimental leap. If we if we lift it, if we drop this and go back out and review, reset the wheel, we're gonna be about another month to two months out again. Um so I think right now with cold winter coming up and that needs to keep our doors open, it's detrimental that. Um I still have to complete stuff and propose that to you all so that you guys can drop it as one huge legislation um to amend that. Um but I'm realistic in what we need. Uh like I said, I'm not on small minded little things. I gotta wait or make sure what we need to do. Um also giving back onto um Honorable Simonson's comment about looking at different avenues to fundraise and to gen- generate grants. To get an extra avenue of where we can divert funds and just look at what we can do as an alternative measure to be self-stable as the Department of Education that coming here. Um like I said, but I'm glad this is a good conversation because it really allows me to now move the division, the Department of Education where it needs to be. Um you know, Chair James, we have like over thirty four business unit that we run for our department, although we don't have a blessed amount. Of a component in our in our wheelhouse. We have M I W that gave over a few quarters of a million dollars. We look over into U, we look over to the college. Um obviously, we get other delegates to stream money through to um Dodi to oversee that capacity as well. So but we will build on our accounting um for the department. But I think right now for the need and timeline that we have to move forward with it, with the amendments, which are realistic. Which is to get us to the next half of the year, I think is probably the best that we can look at right now. But thank you, sir.
All right, thank you um for that. And so right now, for the committee will. Again, the legislation is done budget in progress. So I don't know when it will be on their agenda. We'll be better when you go back, Mr. Nao.
Where um B N S on December second, uh agenda and this legislation is not listed on their agenda. Yeah, right. And Mr. Chairman, I believe that. Steve Dan can probably confirm that. I know that this concept is literal, we can. And um there there was a. One time for it, so I'd like to. But um it's on this document with whether it goes forward or. Or yeah, legislation for town.
Um I'm gonna have um. Our legal counsel see if he can find the information. Um but. About taking it off table at Hesse and then doing our amendments here. If that's possible, and if it is possible, does it go back through the budget analysis committee again?
There was two here, did that vote?
But right now, if that budget finds, is that a issue?
Right on their agenda.
It's table here, but. It's table here. My recommendation at that time was to leave it here, but that wasn't the motion. That wasn't the motion. If you go back to the reporting, I did recommend that. And then the motion was just to table. And that was it. And there there is no motion in that language. It said pending work session or to even leave it here. At the moment, and that was my recommendation, but within the actual motion, that wasn't the case. So I I I did make that recommendation, but within the motion, it wasn't. So if I mean, the three thirty, uh they should go back to the reporting of the motion. That was made at the Hesse meeting because it was, there was no work there that indicated to leave it here at Hesse. But I did make my recommendation, but nobody on Hesse would make that. Recommendation or modify the motion to leave it here at Hesse. So that's that's more about that, but if we go back to the reporting. If that in very top as well. I'm old, um Dr. Nace?
Okay, any current to read? I have a report here. Um keep in mind, I voted. Red to table, that wanted to burn it. Or speech. But. To my understanding, there there is no reference then. Um. So that's highly considered, it's a report to table with recommendations to schedule a work session just today, within the two weeks. But really having acted according to Tinkin, we see uh Charlie, please, after two subsections once for eight, well, then well, hence. So for the legislation to the budget. So. My interpretation, we can act on it, pushing what I do favoring. Kind of being the way you need to come back, we have all that and is it? So when they propose this focus to be a map. They see the priorities, the reestablished priorities and in that's gonna work. Better in your favor, um rather than just convolute a lot of things that are at this point being. So that's my suggestion, sure, thank you.
Um I I guess you could go back to the committee report too, and I don't know how Vice Chair signed the the law statement in the committee report. Um but another option, another option is just to do the amendments here or do it at Navi.
Yes.
So so I mean, again, all the things that I'm watching like maybe report because they will go to. Being that it still moves to being that we we can't go back from being that if you already signed a committee reports. That goes to budget and finance. So that that's my question. If if it goes through budget and finance, that's what Matt's looking into. If it goes to budget and finance, they entertain. Can we, can we? Bring it back to budget, I mean to Hesse? Can we move that legislation forward? Because if they get a motion in a second, it's still this action. That would be considered on the legislation. So it would still move to number key at table.
That we.
So if we say that's voted back after budget and finance. Take action on it and come back to H E with the amendment. Would the legislation, would the new, we're gonna have to go through. Budget and finance committee again, or will this go straight to number key at here? That's where management is looking to to certification. But again, I don't have a paper report. Let me go to Karen, then I'll come here, my shift.
Thank you, Karen. Remember the committee. So the the language that Dr. Nace had read, that was that was part of the committee report. However, I did um have a question um Vice Chair on Thursday regarding the. Motion that you had requested, so um which you had said to keep it here at Navi. And that time that was the motion that was put in place, but my understanding was the table the motion was the first step is motion to do that. So there was no believing that there was a set, there was a motion, there was a second by our team as however, there was no there was no no, we don't look at on that, just the fact that it was table and that's to receive that motion.
Vice Chair, do you?
Um I am watching, you know, uh all the proceedings from different committees up to this point. I'm with venture to say that budget and finance um would appreciate us doing the work here, cats, because this is our older thing. I think they will give it, you know, will you know, give it the respect because they're saying, okay, well, you guys, this budget plan that were it's tested making these amendments. And so this is this must be what they see and what they want because this is your, you know, they're the oversight to their being. I I believe that that's what will, you know, that will be the conversation that takes place there. Um so they would want us to see, they would want us to do the work here and then move it on to them. And then I believe um with committees, I, you know, because I've had uh legislations passed through different committees, they always ask me um as a sponsoring um the legislation, whether I wanna entertain it at their upcoming um meetings or, you know, maybe a a future date. So I've been asked a couple of times, um, you know, are you ready for this? So because we're gonna place it on our committee agenda this coming week. Or do you wanna wait till the next week? So I think um if we ask, if we were to take care of this, um bring it back to Hess, untable it and take care of the amendments. Uh we can certainly request our budget and finance to entertain it when it is ready. And I believe that they will be happy to oblige. So those are just my comments based on what I've seen of the past a few years. I, thank you.
Um so after talking to various parties involved here, when I'm looking at the committee report, um when the last time that this was in um the Hesse meeting, it was stable, as we are right now in a work session. Because we're in a work session, that is not even so um it means that it is, the point of this is still within Hesse. It feels very much so that um the actions that um are being discussed should be appropriate and you see that means that everyone within this, within the next really Hesse meeting, it can be moved forward and the amendments can be applied. Um so then uh I think Hesse has that it was possible and Hesse, it was only looking at the registration.
Yeah.
I I I will leave it at the my agent. But but I can challenge this, but that's me. I you guys know I love so because in your, in our committee report reads that we're gonna, that it's a table motion and that we would schedule a work session in two weeks, we done it. Which we're doing now. The next sentence reads the committee having acted according to the N N C Title Two Sub Chapter Three Subsection Two Subsection One Sixty Four Eight Eight will hence refer the legislation to the Budget and Finance Committee. But again, if my agent wants to do what the recommendation was with Honorable Doctor Ness to do all the amendments here and then come there, take it to budget and finance, I'm all here with that. But if my agent says no, you challenge the delegate James, then I'll challenge it. So I think that's a different agenda.
Thank you. First of it, um no, no. But you know, I really like, this is what a work session should become of, how do we learn how to help each other? At the end, it's for the kids and the communities that we serve, you know. So I think um it's gonna be foolish and it's gonna be um a little bit frivolous if we say, okay, just pull it off. I think the it can be, the adjustments can be made. I'm glad the program managers are all here because they have, what time is it now? It's twelve thirty five, so obviously they get back to their place, they're throwing the lunch station hat to me in hand, their signed budget by one by one thirty my time. So that way I can sit there, I'll be at um with O D S I with Julia to get these all fixed. So every single program manager is gonna cut now their own programs, eliminating food, eliminating um promotionals, they're gonna just do the direct services within that, they're gonna have a calculation of exactly how many schools they serve, how many months, uh how many days a month they travel to those schools and how much it will cost, the coverage of their vehicles, the insurance, um the utility bills, how much averages, it's great. So I'm glad the program managers are here because they're gonna provide me a sales sheet that accommodates all of the justification of each single line item. And then they're gonna give that to me by, I'll take it simply two o'clock. So I'll have that verify everything and then everything's we change or make, but obviously no food, no promotionals, no renting or leasing spots. Uh obviously, what priorities, what the priorities are and the most um significant priority to um and then obviously eliminating these nonsense spending. So I'm glad they're out here. So I'll expect this from all of you by two o'clock today. So I'll review it, uh work with that with Julia, have all the amendments done. Um not only that, I just wanted to, I think that then it held that your levels or oversight is very reasonable. Um like I said, it's your responsibility. And I think being in this work session and knowing what the needs we have and obviously um the budget proposal will obviously be cut by half now because we're fifty past the next half a year already, right? So that's a reason for this to be that. So but um I would like to suggest go with the recommendation and as the agent and as our sponsor, um Chair James, that you give us some time to get this done. Go back to you guys, we'll have this done today and then get it to you all tomorrow um to review and work closely with your legal counsel as well. But um I think that's a really good way to go. I think if we delayed any longer, we're gonna put ourselves in a difficult situation. But I think this is a minor self direction we can make and get together. And like I said, the program managers are gonna get some information to me along with a Excel sheet to um justify what costs are needed for each of the areas that they're going to be for. Thank you, Julia.
Um I I don't see that.
So thank you, Chair James, and the Hesse committee members. Um thank you to our legal counsel. We get to talk.
Oh, okay. Yeah, thank you um for that. So tomorrow we do have Hesse meeting. Uh we have it ready tomorrow. I think we will make that amendment to add to our agenda because it's currently not on our agenda. But you really have to intel uh O N B um as well. So you would have to get information to O N B to staff again, have anything heard. Um but I think Roddy was gonna say that because he's already here on budget and finance. And he's like, oh, I gotta get over there. But he would have to get back from parents who come over to be at the same time, um staff, I guess he can send an email over to O N B now to at least have them be aware that you would need them tomorrow right there. I see special maybe. And make sure they have the whole set to ban. So you probably have to send that email over to them. Um and if you guys wanna attack it tomorrow, um maybe you've done had a different layer special Hesse meetings as well. So again, I will leave it up to you, how far you can get to it today, this afternoon. Um so if uh let me, let me go to Honorable Doctor Ness personally, Honorable Doc, um Honorable Doc.
Okay, thank you. Good. Uh uh that would be my recommendation as well. It would be uh what I just wanna say for the record, that would be is what was shared by the senior committee is from her, from her. I don't think as a committee, we call you to strike boom and strike catering and strike all that. I don't think as a committee, that's not what we're requesting of you for your budget. But what for myself, we always defer to um emotional identity, or me, that's what I was going for. Because some of these budget, you'd be surprised, some of them have six hundred thousand to buy, I don't know. Things that to me just don't make sense in that end of the nation along uh six years. And so I see where they end up. Um and so that that's why I'm not big in climate goal. But I just wanted to clarify that, however, you feel that the amendment uh should move forward in the budget um that you revise, then just know that we're really just looking at the the priorities moving forward because whether this passes or not, we're gonna be out of uh our first order and then looking ahead. And again, I think that's just the Joey in a better position move moving forward. So I just wanted to say that for the record to each other.
Um, Mr. Noll.
Um thank you, Mr. Chair. Our mission is to assist the people. Um we we uh I I on the committee report that I drafted, I included the case that you know, that for that department, this um the legislation does involve you that our budget and finance committee that exacting the budget and finance community to place around their agenda. And I think um you're working with um your advisor indicating that there were some concerns and that there might still be that that um committee members were wanting to um look over. And so then that was the here's up to round that and there's still some work that um has real ones that you're place. Um but the um I I might have looked through the pages, but I believe that even it is deferred to the budget when you create and it has been on their agenda that they should refer that to. And you don't search for uh they're recommended for them to the um they were just um since the office here, um there there are some um congressional areas which is what is gonna be proposing to um here. And I did mark it with the with the um airplace ads. And I did take it apart because it was an existent, like both how it was um organized and that. And I think that was leading to a lot of interruption at D N F. Okay, okay. And then um and there are some that are not, you can hear that I I got that. Um the this all is in office. It did an O B Y for the um maybe that, you know, they're they're not those I mean, I mean, what's that titular? Um um budget forms. Um and but the the other thing too is that I know that B N F one and a half, now, for example, I believe that in the um uh D O E administration. Uh we are on budget form one, under supplies, you get thirty two thousand. But that's the difference of twenty two thousand is of the what you have in the line. And I I feel that they're probably asking where that kind of first come, and there's a kind of sort of one that that you will see this way. And the same thing that um repairs on maintenance, you have fifty three thousand, but the minor, that's forty eight thousand. But I mean, well, it's um I fifty three thousand is forty eight thousand more, but but it might be this this day. And then um
Don't probably go over.
Okay, and I just just watch out for your um your um operation because the one more um dedication registered than the physics is one. But that is one, so I know that the other question that was an inch three, you know, that's more ready. And then it's um we I'm just prepared the other, the other thing is um I recall the um I think of the education that um we did indicate the um time operation in this um A T H S D D P S and that's for me to actually be one of the the program information. So I did make a talk and we can have it too.
All right. So just really quickly, tomorrow's meeting, this is due of December eighth. A regular um Hesse meeting, so that's why we're having a special Hesse meeting. After that, we're not sure if we'll have our next Hesse meeting. Uh I know it's not gonna happen over the weekend, but uh so we'll see how far you guys can get um today to tomorrow on our testimony, we have the game at nine AM, ten?
Ten, it's a special meeting.
That's right, special meeting at AM, so over here.
No, we have um
D O H.
We have it. And this legislation is not, we agenda for Hesse.
Yeah, so that's where we would, if you guys are ready, then we'll Vice Chair or Doctor Noll.
And they all would have challenged it.
Yeah.
Okay, so for that being tomorrow, Cheryl, I'm sorry for interruption, but I'm getting if um other information. And so what I wasn't aware of, um but this should be a problem to what is what is that is that going to wave maybe that it will work that going to even a lot of the table competitive area of Hesse. So if it is kind of like Hesse, then it's it's supposed to go to the next committee, it should be that's that that's the issue again, you know, in our policy. But we're to take a pop, okay, there's a test. We want to take it.
Usually, the most um heard of law or or committee rule that never, none of the legislations get taken on table and motion, if that committee did not file until that's so I was gonna go into my challenge, but I guess one one's continue moving forward the way we're moving forward. Um if they have an issue, I think we'll go back and um again, just like Vice Chair said, taking work at Budget and Finance Committee. And I can't, I would have been, I would have something or the changes that we've used March, or the changes that are made. Another option is I could share that also was one of the the main mentioned in budget and finance, and they entertain it. And I don't have certain at that time or with whatever other nobody say wants to do that budget and finance as well. If that's not the case, then like I said earlier, other option would be just to do that mobile P M P. Um with the outcome, they will. Um but uh again, I would just encourage you guys to to try and fix the problems afternoon. I know um legal our legal counsel and I know staff, I know we are already texting each other, sharing this information with each other. That's why we you know, this getting this information from that. So I've I figured this whole web being out. So I scratched my back, deal thing. So if it's it's seeable, I mean, like, I was like, you know what? Just get over it, just do the work, it needs to happen. The budget form just needs to happen. Um just those directions, this needs to happen. Or as to need for. So hey, that's so I just wanted to 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 I I figured out where all the connections are. Does this mean I don't share with my people? I I know we're all connected, so. So hey, do you have that? Um so well, you better start. Uh standing on my side and figure out this whole connection. You stay beside me. So you'll learn of all the secrets as well. Um so with that, I will leave it out to you, our superintendent and the Department of Education from here on out. So we'll see what our partner is capable of.
Yeah.
But any of that, a third other question. Uh we'll go ahead and end it um items, the review of legislation number zero two by nine dash advised. There's that a question, we don't have a motion or a second, so you guys are hereby excused. Thank you. Have a good one. So with that, moving on to item number C, national registration. Do we have registration here? Um if not, this was to request an update on the complete veteran's false listing. Um, if not, this was to request an update on the completed veterans home listing. With the Veterans Trust Fund and the ARCO funds, update on the veterans' house renovation listings. Update on the funding budget for construction of veterans' homes. Update on the construction timelines of the creation of veterans' homes of even now for nation A C. Uh, Mr. Nali? Um, since there's no show from the presenter Bobby Baldwin, already mourned. A Vera Cheller, or William Nance. Are we, are we part of, are we gonna? Alright, so I guess the committee members are just asked, maybe you can find this before. Definitely to hear, to hear report on veterans' administration. Same information, we add that tomorrow on. On that agenda. The veterans for hiding feelings. And they can give that information tomorrow. Once, our special S E agenda. But only to be added, number of lives that are lost. To even put it on the, our data. So maybe you have to keep, keep in shape, so, thank you. So maybe, keep in shape, alright, so. Um, I made a recommendation, I made a recommendation to. I just, I have one of the committee members, I just gave that, then his mom. So let's see, I can't see my. Well, I didn't see it yet.
We did get it up here. We dealt around Bobby Baldwin, and he gets sent it to just um. Chair Nelson and Heather Duncan, and that was said. His data was resident in just three years, and he was found with veterans, and he has in the county, and he should part of the company. And just getting down to the committee, having thirty members, and um, like other than that. Uh, to reply by time, um, it is acknowledged, but um, the, there's a reply of the altar. Forwarded to that, and so that we, she, I mean, sixty all like funding him and have a. Plan of introducing that, so it was like, and she was like, one two hundred.
Alright, so um, again, committee members, if I have to, this happens, you guys have this to the agenda tomorrow at the fourth.
Yes.
The very last edit from the fourth, maybe tomorrow. The sooner the better, we bring it up, all this. Uh, so with that, honorable Dr. Nance.
Yes, thank you Chair, so I'm just curious when this was added? Because my understanding for today's work session was primarily D P M. And then we added in the other two, the insurance is on the water vehicle. Like part of discussion, including D O D. Then this one appeared. Where I'm getting at, is oh, I, I see that initially. As an delegate, that these go up to programs late. Sometimes I'm on a Friday after four. That's not sufficient time to be present before the committee on a Monday, the board meeting. In that tomorrow's. Um, agenda, I saw that we're rescheduling again the N V D slash insurance presentation. So I don't know. I'm assuming, um, maybe it's Chair's directive, or I don't know. But my plan accordingly, and then I get my, maybe then the agenda comes on, you're probably a paper for hiding. Or this I have. Then I'm, I'm kind of digging through some of the stuff that I even put aside, so I find those out because I don't want to compare the whole session. So I'm just kind of curious, where or who that is at. Um. But I know sometimes it, I feel that roll holiday, so we never mind. In that analogy, holiday, so I don't necessarily clarification there, Chair.
Um, again, thank you, um, honorable Dr. Nance. This has been an ongoing um, issue during work session um. With them, and so that was potential to figure out, I know what. Information from different things, and then to schedule a work session with them. Uh, but again. Going back as, as um, committee member and. These affiliate, it's been go with, with sessions. Both. Um. Again, I don't even know, I don't even know who, who we gave another work session, so that's why this has been ongoing issue, definitely they did a lot. Was blocked forward to us, and but I would assume that they have all this information listed out already, and it's the completion of. Veterans home listing that we had asked before, um, that we haven't received. From uh, regarding the Veterans Trust Fund, and your ARCO fund. Also the two separate things. And then the renovation listing, you know, for, for veterans out there. Uh, because there's some veterans that have come to us, uh, committee, to confess that, you know. We were told there's no common, common regulation. Um, funding, but then again, just recently we heard also that. There are doing, there are common regulations happening for veterans after. Um, so that consensus of sharing that information, this is why we added that information as well. And then also the updating of funding budget for the construction of veterans' homes. Um, again, where do we stand on the budget when it comes to ARCO? Or, for, for the veterans. So maybe, so these were the system things that have been brought up to us and asked, but we just never had a work session. Agenda for it, um, so we, I, I didn't make a request to, to add this, you know, huge agenda. Um, again, I'm asking you guys now, I'm looking at such you guys. You guys want to add it to tomorrow's agenda, but once we come out of the foundation. Uh, there's several, then, then that would be great to figure out, you know, point, the point is that we really just sit down, schedule. This work session of veterans' administration, to go over this housing, the renovation, the structure, the budget. So maybe with that, and then we'll refer to that from this following as well. Um, so we will, we will have a work session, which is probably several months back ago. Um, but again, I said this is. A, a real, um. Uh. A real interesting topic, because we just now are scheduling a work session at least. Okay. So um, so I'll leave it at that, but again, listen on.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, make sure to be. Help the machines with spending and um, availability. Um, you know, thank you for your statement about twenty four hour notice, because you know, I try to adhere to that and, you know, because. Our Monday meetings are on a Monday, I try to get the agenda, I, I, you know, try and get it out Thursday. And so this particular agenda was drafted Tuesday. And then reviewed by Chair, and then this item was added, so it was added um. To, uh, let me say, and that's. Um, but there are, sometimes when I receive. You know, uh, uh, even after the agenda has been reviewed, I receive someone. Request, just like um, I, we got the energy, we requested, request an item. Um, you didn't, I made that um, adjustment, it's more an addition, and I have to get it those fit. And so that's what, that's what I did. Um. But it, you know, just getting in contact with the, in the entities, and if you send them emails or write comments, letting them know, so they're not like, I'm freaking surprised. About having to uh, come towards the community. Um, I try to, you know, get them down. And answer any questions as best I can, when I put the subject in, and I know the question is that message. When it comes, so that they can, they can come there, and they know there's the trees tonight, and then they prolongs it, who waves it, who gets to burn, and so. Right, uh, but I did appreciate, you know, their, Chair, there's like hard stuff when we meet agenda, from adding any more items perhaps. You know, there's a warning. You know, that we have our deadline, so that way, you know, the um, department is um, for then, you know, um. Um, it's got two days of operation. And then they'll be posted, you know, relevant events, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, um. For that. Um. I, I will leave that up to the committee members, I think they have an understanding of this whole agenda, like the first thing. Words. I'll put a deadline on it, if you put a deadline on it, we'll. Come back to you on time, thanks. So, so this is best, it's a big opening, we, we're in the revision of. Morning, I'm serious, English, to, to know that there is, we have activity for all of this folks.
Yeah.
So. My house, my playing, I'll develop a theme, but. Proceed with that policy, let's play, so. But again, I guess I just fully taken in as a friend of mine, like the one, one committee members, the. This is what we run into, or the consultant, or to solve the community problem, or that really affects us. So we made that request, it's just now, now making that request, and this is all what we want to meet is, and. Heard that, it's sound, oh, and string board, I would, I should be doing this, maybe, I should make a request for the next um, S E meeting. So maybe, okay. Obviously, uh, there's no others, um, but again. Tell it to you guys that maybe on this, that respect for you, while you're all busy, you know, I do both, they each share you and. Whatnot, so maybe, I will, I will, I will, so that's how I'm gonna say, each of you for the notes, so. Maybe with that. If there's no other questions, comment, then I'll go to item number five, which is sort of the readings, announcing it, and generally. So now that tomorrow we are leaving, at ten AM. Special meeting. Um, and that will be at, now at the bottom of hell, this opportunity. I really don't know if we will provide their place or not. So that's, I don't really, but thank you. So, over there at the, we already. So maybe, thank you. So that'll be tomorrow at ten AM, Monday, the seventh, fifteenth, is our regular meeting, but that has to be rescheduled, because if you all are in front that day. For me. In several, so um, the water rights litigation, the, and the water rights settlement. Um, so it actually, you know, showing me that was that. That week, so. Maybe, you know, we don't, you know, that, well, then, after that, we'll, we'll be back on a regular schedule here Monday, the seventh, fifth, second. Um, S E. So with that, I guess if there's no other announcements. Concerns, comments, questions. I want to thank you again. That for the nail face. And so. Maybe with that. Turn here at one oh four PM. And I need to rush out, because I was posting another session, and I just.
Agreed.
Um, I would think. R C shake.
Oh, tomorrow I have the.